So I'm between, between, we're being bold. Welcome, everybody here who is online and welcome for everybody here is in person. We are very excited to have everybody back at Yale for our next rare disease advisory committee meeting. We are kind of shifting. We spent the first year listening to our government experts and listening to our patients and our constituents kind of give testimony. So now we're going to kind of switch gears and starting to learn about the services that already exist in Connecticut. We're starting here at Yale today, but we'll be also hearing from our colleagues up in the North of the state. So we're doing the South of the state now, but next meeting we'll be doing, next meeting or two, we'll do people in the North of the state to learn more about what we have, what things we can do to support these clinics so they can support the rare disease community. We have a very full agenda here, so I'm thrilled with all the people who have volunteered to present and can be here. So in this, in the interest of time, I'm going to start moving. We need to roll call first. Okay, all right. Leslie's reminding me of all the specific initiatives we have to do, and I already remember. So before we get started, we are going to do a roll call for the ARDAC members. I will start since I'm standing up and then go back and sit. I am Michelle Spencer-Manson. I am a representative from the medical community. I am the co-chair for the committee this year.
I'm Lesley Bennett. I'm the co-chair. I'm representative of patients, rare disease patients. I'm a patient advocate.
Hi, I'm Mary Caruso. I have two adult children with rare disease, predescent apthia, and I represent caregivers.
Hi, I'm Craig Miller. I'm the Director of Immunology and Respiratory Disease Research at Oregon Pharmaceutical, where I focus on identifying treatments for patients with rare disease. I'm a member of the ARDAC, representative of pharmaceutical industry, and a member of the exact.
Joanna?
Hi, I'm Joanna Gal. I'm a physician scientist and a pediatric oncologist and hematologist at Connecticut Children's, and I do my research at the Jackson Laboratory for Genomic Medicine, and I'm a member of the ARDAC as a representative of the scientific community.
Boy?
Hi, I'm Emily Germaine Lee. I'm also a physician scientist. I'm a pediatric endocrinologist, professor at UConn in my clinical work at Connecticut Children's, and a member of ARDAC as a physician representative.
Kevin? I can't hear you, Kevin. Kevin, unmute.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm Kevin Felice. I'm a neuromuscular neurologist and professor at UConn Health Center, and I represent Hospital for Special Care.
Colleen?
Hi, my name is Colleen Brunetti.
Oh, Colleen, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Is it me? Okay. Hi, I'm Colleen Brunetti. I am an adult living with a rare disease and a member of the ARDAC in my capacity.
Yeah. Jim Carson?
I'm Jim Carson. I'm representing the Connecticut Insurance Department, and I'm also a parent of a child with a rare condition.
Did I miss anyone? Nope. Michelle, go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Thank you, Leslie, for keeping us on track and keeping us where we need to be. So we have a, we do have a packed agenda. I'm thrilled to be able to introduce all these wonderful people who are part of the rare disease community here in the Southern half of the state and from Yale. So we're going to start with the cystic fibrosis clinic, who's going to present a little bit to us about their clinic.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the invitation. I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but we're actually in clinic. My name's Marie Egan. I'm a professor of pediatrics and cellular molecular physiology, and I'm the director of our pediatric CS center. I have some slides I'd love to share if I can. Let's see. Let's see. Okay, sorry about that. Oops. I really will be able to do this momentarily. All right. So for those who don't, cystic fibrosis is a rare disease. It's a multi-organ disease that affects lungs, complications of CF. It's, is lung disease, lung failure. Sometimes we have massive hemoptysis with bleeding from the lung. We have intestinal disease and intestinal obstruction, extragranpancreatic disease, infection, and immunity are also issues of the lung and sinuses. There are skin issues with sweat gland abnormalities. We see liver disease in a fair number of patients. Liver's affected with can lead to cirrhosis requiring transplant, osteoporosis, so we get disease of the bone, CF-related diabetes. So the pancreatic, the endocrine part of the pancreas also is affected. There's a lot of inflammatory disease, both in lungs and GI tract, that can be manifestations of the disease. Patients often have a higher level of depression and anxiety, and then we also have seen early onsets of cancer. Historically, this was a disease diagnosed early in life, and actually, people did not live out of childhood. That has changed dramatically over my life as a physician, and now all of our, almost all of our patients, I'd say, wind up as adults, and we have an adult center and soon to build, I'm sure, a geriatric center as well. So when we think about CF care and what we offer, we have a very comprehensive clinical care. It's multidisciplinary. We have a very big quality improvement program. We actually just were awarded our third National QI Award for improvements in care that we provide, so that's 15 years running. The, in addition to what we do from a clinical standpoint, I meet families before children are even born. Often, the genetic counselors refer families to me so I can meet them and tell them what it is to have, at least from a medical standpoint, a child with CF. We have a group of incredible, talented medical providers that really cover all aspects of disease, and we'll go into that in a middle minute. In addition to the clinical care, I think the reason CF has really moved from a childhood disease to a disease that's a chronic illness that we see, people live well into a normal lifespan, is because of all of the work that has been done to understand the pathophysiology. So we have a lot of basic science research that we do, and we also have a clinical trials network that we're part of, and all three of these areas combined really give us our most comprehensive approach and actually have patience with CF living very full and what would be considered normal lives. And I'm going to touch a little bit on, on all of these. The care team model, just for you to see here, we have a core team that has a lot of medical providers, and there's core members. We also have a very comprehensive list of folks that are basically extra lifelines and essential members of our team. Everybody who is part of the team really works together and develops their subspecialty and their expertise that, and how it actually relates to CF proper. In addition to all of the core members, the essential members, the go-to members that we actually need, there's programmatic components as well. These are just some of our team members, the essential, some of the essential members of our team, just to give you a sense of who we are and what we do. We're in accredited CF centers, so the CF Foundation accredits and comes and sees us every five years. It's apparently a rigorous approval process just to make sure that we have everything that one might need in order to really help patients with CF live their fullest lives. So what are the functions of our care team? Clearly, we provide all the medical expertise that one needs. We do these inpatient visits, telehealth visits. We review labs. We monitor. We're very proactive. We also help with all of the social services one might need, coordinate community engagement, things at school, advocate at the state level and at the national level, and are constantly doing quality improvement in order to really provide what would be, I can think, equivalent to a medical home for folks in addition to making sure we can advocate for medications, copays, and an array of other activities that one might not necessarily think is part of your job as the medical provider. So in addition to the clinical work that we do and the comprehensive approach, we also do a lot in the way of research. I have a lab that, when I'm not doing clinical work, we are working on nucleic acid therapies, including gene editing, mRNA delivery. We work on animal models and also on human cells. And again, we do clinical trials that will help bring these therapies to our patients. There are other providers and other scientists. So Emanuela Bruscha is a scientist who really works on the inflammatory components and the immune response, and she definitely uses some animal models to get that done. And Dr. Murray is an ID specialist who works on all of the pathogens that cause the lung infections that actually lead to lung failure and requiring, requiring sometimes transplant. So some nucleic acid therapies, as I said, we have a really comprehensive team that works on this, and we are funded through an array of agencies, again, trying to build from bench to bedside and back. And then the immune dysregulation, similar things. Dr. Bruscha's lab does immune response, dysregulated macrophage function, and she develops therapeutic approaches. And then from new initiatives and trying to fight lung development and inflammation. Am I over my five minutes? Okay, start. I'll stop. And we're trying to fight CF, and we work with our adult internal medicine colleagues on the inflammatory response. Dr. Britu, who I'm sure Dr. Coff will talk about later, is, and our pulmonary fellows to really look at what's different in our diseases and disease states. So again, we go from bench to bedside and back, and we offer pretty comprehensive care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Marie. I really appreciate it. That was fantastic. Are there any, any quick, we have time, I'm trying to leave at least one minute. Are there any questions for Dr. Egan?
You have one, Michelle.
Yeah, go ahead.
If that's okay. I'll try to, it's a complex question, Mary, but maybe it's one to, that we can discuss more. From my time in academia, due to being in drug discovery for 20 years or so, there's been an incredible transformation, I think, for system patients. When I look at the rare disease community, it really is one area that stands out to me. And I think it's, I wonder, from your perspective, what's been the recipe that has really led to what I think is tremendous success for patients? The cystic fibrosis foundations are very strong. There's a lot of research, the genetics. What, is there something here that we can learn in terms of the model to also bring this to other rare disease spaces?
Sure. I think the, the model in CF that has really made things kind of move ahead is, and this is going to sound, is that there's a very central, there are sometimes where it's a plus and minus, but there's a very central database. We have, the CF Foundation has invested, and the CF Foundation, which is actually mostly driven by small donations from families, right? So they have built this network across the country, and they have, it's this centralized approach that, that then feeds local chapters and then has identified talent at institutions to really move things forward. That centralized database, we can compare outcomes across the entire enterprise as far as everybody who has CF to see, you know, what's working, what isn't working, what do we be able to identify? I'll stop. Thanks. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right. So I'm sure Dr. Egan would be happy to interface with other people in the future to, if that, I'm going to leave my contact information at the end. If there's anybody you, you hear about today, you want to interact with more, and I can get to make an introductory email. So we're going to move on to Dr. Weinstein. So Dr. Weinstein is one of our otolaryngologists here and works on our complex hearing loss clinic at Yale and is going to give some presentation now.
I'm going to be as short and sweet as possible. I am also spread out across Southern Connecticut and Norwalk today. Cystic nerve hearing loss, SNHL, is a rare disease, but it is a relatively common rare disease. Between 1 and 6 in 1,000 newborns have some sort of level of hearing impairment. A little more common, the Down syndrome, Spine and Bifida, PKU, and we all know how important it is to get auditory input into a young child's hearing so that they can understand language and develop language on track. And because of this, there are a lot of resources that we devote to testing and treating pediatric hearing loss even before a baby is able to communicate with us. We have four providers on our team. Doctors Waldman, Schilde, and I are more on the hearing loss side of things. Dr. Marass helps out a little bit, but she does more of the airway side of things for pediatric ENT. Like I said, we're spread across Southern Connecticut along the coastline, and we operate there as well. This is just a general ballpark for the number of patients that we see who require hearing aids per month. So it's somewhere between 20 and 25 patients a month, and those are kids that are having hearing loss that is more complex, that is more severe, and it's a bit of a surrogate to sort of describe the number of patients that we're seeing. This is a very busy table, so my apologies there, but this is just sort of showing the growth in ENT visits of where kids are getting diagnosed with hearing loss, the idiology visits where kids are getting fit with hearing aids, and then cochlear implants and bone anchored, bone anchored hearing devices. Those are some of the surgeries that we do to help kids with more complex, severe hearing loss. The cochlear implant team is one of the teams that I help to run. We have a monthly meeting, and similar to the CF team, we require input from several different providers and types of providers to help these kids with really severe hearing loss. There's the surgical side of things, the ideologist and testing and therapy side of things, once they have cochlear implants in place. Social work is involved. There's a lot of resources that are required of patients to get to a lot of appointments to manage more complex issues, whether they're at home or at school, that are associated with complex hearing loss there. The speech and language pathologists also help with the therapy side of things. And then we have a nurse coordinator who sort of ties everything together with a bow at the end. We meet once a month, and there's about 15 to 20 patients, patients that we discuss and coordinate their care on a rolling average there. Just to give you a sense of the amount of resources required for a patient who has various severe hearing loss and maybe needs a cochlear implant, they're going to need imaging, an MRI or CT scan. That imaging usually requires sedation, so just to get that imaging, it's half a day, a suite CT scanner, movement of that patient, nursing. It's, it's a production just to get one of the tests required to get the patient to the next part of their care. They need multiple hearing tests, including something called an auditory brainstem response test that requires specialized training from the ideologist's perspective. Sometimes it also requires sedation, once again, with or without anesthesia there. They need to see ENTs, the speech and language pathologists, they see our geneticists. We are rapidly entering a new phase that I'm going to talk to you a little bit about at the end, where gene therapy and genetic diagnosis is extremely important for us to continue to provide the excellent care that we give. Some of these kids have eye issues and ophthalmologic evaluation is necessary. After surgery, we still have to see them very frequently to make sure the cochlear implants function properly, to tweak it, to provide oral and speech therapy. At Yale, we're proposing to start a hearing loss center that's going to help address kids that have severe hearing loss, however, are not at the level where they need cochlear implant or bone anchored hearing device. That's still in production phase, but stay tuned. Hopefully, the next meeting, I can talk to you all about that. Some other potential next steps, like I said, genetic diagnosis is becoming much more successful as the number of genes that we've identified that cause hearing loss goes up. And treatment, this is not something we're offering at Yale yet, but other institutions are at the very beginning phase of clinical trials for very specific types of hearing loss using genetic therapy, gene therapy injected directly into the inner parts of the ear. And so this is an exciting new prospect in our field and something that in the next five to 10 years is going to be much more common, but is already starting to happen. Just some of the nuts and bolts and some of the fun that we get to do in Connecticut to work with and transition to and from the birth to three centers. I think especially as somebody, a provider myself, who sees a lot of patients in Southern Fairfield County, there is a bit of a hurdle in terms of providing some of the hearing loss-ish care required for patients who maybe don't have the resources that we typically associate with lower Fairfield County. There is a significant Medicaid and uninsured population there that is falling a bit between the cracks, something to look into down the road. And then with our hearing loss center that we're going to be creating there, is there a teacher of the deaf? Is there a dedicated speech and language pathologist that we can get on board there? This was us this weekend. It's beautiful in Connecticut right now. Thank you for your time. I want to be on the beach with Michelle, but if I can't, then I'll be here.
Thank you so much, Michael. Really appreciate it. That was fantastic. Same thing, I would say, will it take one minute for questions? Maybe have any quick questions either from our in-person or online group right now about the hearing loss program? Okay, great. Same thing. If you have additional questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me and get you in touch with Dr. Weinstein in the future or ideas for collaboration. So we are going to now move on to our first in-person presenter, who will be Dr. Glasser, who's going to talk to us about the cranial facial scleroderma clinic. That's going to require me to share. I have, I have a composite for everybody who is here. You, you can either run it off my computer or you can, I can, I can advance for you. What would you put?
Oh, sure, you can keep clicking.
Right. If you're some people.
I was going to say, everybody, I'm making a statement.
My name is Dan Glazer. I'm an assistant professor of pediatrics in the section of pediatric dermatology and general pediatrics as well, and I'm going to talk of cranial facial scleroderma here at Yale. Slide. So cranial facial scleroderma is a rare disease. It's approximately one per 100,000 children per year incidence. It's a combination of inflammation and fibrotic change that classically affects the skin, but also affects all structure of the head and neck, including brain, muscles, the glands, the eyes, and the dentition. It has historically been divided up amongst various specialties. It all lives under this umbrella of cranial facial scleroderma, which encompasses two broad diagnoses, one called acute dysabias scleroderma that you see here on the A side, and it's a spectrum ranging to what's called Peri-Ronberg syndrome. Each of these are thought to be distinct disease entities and are likely not. So these are the types of kids that we provide care for. So we are the only site in Connecticut that cares for these folks. Again, this is a rare disease, so there are only a few of us in the country that focus on this as our research and clinical expertise. And so we have four key features, I think, that benefit us here. So we have extra clinical assessment, access to advanced 3D clinical imaging, really experienced reconstructive cranial facial surgeons, and then we're part of the act of collaborative research studies that are going to operate. So this is me. I'm an expert in clinical care. I'm one of the three pediatric dermatologists here at Yale. I'm the one, I focus on scleroderma. So I co-founded one of the first cranial facial scleroderma clinics in the country, fellowship in Pittsburgh, one of the co-developers of our current cranial facial assessment rubric, co-developed with Boston, Pittsburgh as well, publications, lectures, those types of things. And then my co-host release is in this 3D imaging assessment. What this allows us to do is we take three-dimensional images of patients' faces using just regular sets of cameras.
I hope you weren't waiting for me.
We then can take those 3D, those digital images and merge them in the computer with images over time to assess changes to their face, trajectory changes, looking for new disease involvement, stabilization of the disease involvement, or any potential reconstructive effects that we've seen. And we're presenting both sort of classic model-based meshes where we just measure the distances, as well as some more advanced techniques where we utilize automated processing of the images to look at different colorations of the skin that can incorporate things like inflammation or damage assessments. Also, two really experienced cranial facial surgeons here that we work with, Michael Paravick and Karen Morrison. Cranial facial scleroderma is unique because there is both a sort of active damage phase and then a reconstruction phase. So in the active damage phase, we treat with medications like immunomodulators, inflammatory treatments. Once we stabilize the disease, many patients have significant facial differences or facial deficits that need reconstruction, and so we rely on our surgical colleagues for that. And both Michael and Carrie have a lot of experience here. Carrie actually just came to us from Boston, where she trained with one of my research collaborators there, has a significant expertise in these patients, and they offer all aspects of surgical reconstruction. And then we are, one of the sites for active research collaborations as well, where we collaborate with multiple institutions around the country as well as into Canada, looking at all aspects of this disease. Cranial facial scleroderma is really understudied, so we really don't understand a lot about both the disease trajectory, the variety of clinical manifestations, and what the optimal treatment is, what causes it. So we have active studies engaged in all those things, both to bring awareness to providers, just in our scleroderma photo atlas, really trying to understand the brain involvement. About a third of patients will have significant brain abnormalities. We really don't understand why or what that means. And now we're working really closely on with our collaborators in Pittsburgh, Boston, as well as the NIH to understand what the cause of this disease is. We suspect it is a genetic disease, and we're hopeful we have our meeting on Friday to get our first batch of clinical results back in there. So very excited about that. And then, so you know, this is, so I'm new to Yale, I've been here just about three years. So we have a lot of work that we'd like to build this up. So we want to expand our imaging capability right now through the graces of the plastic surgery department. I'm allowed to use their imaging camera, and they're great collaborators, but we'd like to bring handheld imaging out of the hair into our satellite sites. I see patients in Norwalk in trouble, and I'd love to bring our imaging capabilities there. We're looking to develop a registry here in collaboration with our other clinical sites to better capture disease metrics of these patients. Right now, I refer patients to one of our two collaborating sites that have existing registries, and we're hoping to get that out to them next year or so. We're looking to expand our subspecialty collaborations, you know, just as this can involve these facial structures that need reconstruction. Patients can have neurological deficits, they can have ocular abnormalities and severe orthognastics, or dental abnormalities, and so we're working to develop preferential providers who have more experience with that. And then lastly, there can be a lot of significance, like psychosocial distress related to these, especially in children and adults. So really want to enhance our social work and behavioral health support for these patients. We recognize that it's very under-recognized and understudied portion of this disease. And then, this is me, if you ever have to reach us. We operate on Thursday afternoons out of W P two. There's lots of ways to get in touch with us, and we would love to see patients. I should say, we have a very close collaboration with our dermatologists at Connecticut Children's as well, and so we really appreciate their work and front patients down to me so we can see them and optimize their clinical care. Happy to take any questions.
We're happy to have you back. It's been so good to have you back.
I did residence here. I went away for fellowship in Pittsburgh, and now I came back. It's nice.
Yes. He was an absolutely excellent resident. We pretty often.
I know an adult of Peri-Ronberg. Do you know?
So I don't know of any specific adult collaborator. So Moni Kanchik is here at Yale. She runs the Yost Scleroderma Center. And so she has experience in both localized and systemic scleroderma, and so she'd be a great starting point. And certainly, she had, you know, she and I work together sometimes on patients, and I do, because some of these are so rare, we do on occasion consult with adult patients in the adult clinic. So that would be something that would be available.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Maybe just comment from me, Michelle. So thanks for the presentation. I spent a significant portion of my time doing research, and working with Moni actually is one of our collaborators, but I just want to applaud you for taking on a challenge of what's already a rare and severe disease and now taking a subset of that and pediatric component with that as well. So it just, it takes a lot of courage, I think, to kind of do that, to enter into those areas, but to really go after an underserved and more underserved patient population. So thanks for that.
All right. Thank you so much. It was so good to see you again. If you want to reach out more, please reach out, and I'll help to make those, those connections. All right. So now we're going to talk here, Dr. Tolchin, who's going to prevent to us on the functional neurologic symptom disorder clinic.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the, the invitation. I just have my contact information, email, and work cellphone if folks want to get in touch with me, but I'll be speaking very briefly about functional neurologic symptom disorder. So, so these are neurologic symptoms such as weakness, numbness, impaired cognition. So, so these are neurologic symptoms such as weakness, numbness, impaired cognition, or involuntary movements uh that are thought to be caused by cognitive affective mechanisms, so stress and other strong emotions. Um, there is often a, a complex uh mix of biological, uh, psychological and social predisposing and precipitating factors for patients with uh functional neurologic disorders. Um, in particular, adverse life experiences such as trauma, abuse, and neglect appear to play a causal role in, in a large majority, but not all uh patients with functional neurologic symptom disorder. Um, this is really an umbrella term for a, a category also labeled as conversion disorder in the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual V. And it includes uh many subtypes, including functional movement disorder, uh, functional seizures, which is my particular subspecialty as, as an epileptologist and functional cognitive disorder. And so it really requires interdisciplinary collaboration between many different specialists to care for uh patients uh in, in this spectrum. Which I'll talk a little bit about. We know that the costs of untreated functional neurologic disorder are very high for patients, families, and society. In comparison to people with uh epilepsy or multiple sclerosis, uh, folks with functional neurologic symptom disorder have consistently worse quality of life. And the majority of, of patients diagnosed with functional neurologic disorder are unemployed at the time of diagnosis and, and fifty-six percent receive disability payments of, of adults. Um, but what's more concerning is that in the absence of treatment and, and many patients uh nationally do not receive evidence-based treatment, but in the absence of, of treatment, um, the majority of patients will continue to have uh functional neurologic symptoms and, and will remain unemployed and on disability. Um, one Danish population level study estimated that the cost of uh in lost earnings due to underemployment uh is, is around eighteen thousand five hundred dollars uh per ye- patient annually, which significantly exceeds the annual cost of diagnosis and treatment. Um, uh, in terms of mortality in the uh sub area of functional seizures, which is sort of a subtype of functional neurologic disorder. Um, there's a growing body of evidence that suggests that people with functional seizures experience higher rates of mortality compared to healthy controls. Uh, so in a recent study of over five thousand individuals diagnosed uh by video EEG, people with functional seizures had a standardized mortality ratio of two and a half times that of the general population, and that is comparable to and not statistically different from the standardized mortality ratio of three point three for those with severe medically refractory epilepsy. In terms of uh treatment that we provide in, in uh our, our center, so the Yale Epilepsy Center, which I believe Dr. Knight and Dr. Hiloian will be speaking about in, in greater length, and the uh Yale Movement Disorder Clinic uh collaborate to provide a, a number of treatments. And these include psychotherapy and particular cognitive behavioral therapy or trauma-focused therapy. Uh, physical and or occupational therapy. And then psychopharmacologic treatment of frequently co-occurring psychiatric disorders such as mood disorders, anxiety disorders, and uh post-traumatic stress disorder, or PTSD. Um, in addition to uh these evidence-based treatments, our clinic also offers uh lifestyle medicine, uh group program, uh social work and community health worker support to assist with many of the uh psychosocial stressors that our patients encounter. Um, on a statewide basis, one, one key point I would make here is that patients with functional neurologic uh disorder really benefit from access to behavioral healthcare, physical therapy and occupational therapy. And while we're able to provide those in our center, uh, I, I think that many patients and families have, have encountered uh limited access to these resources. Um, in, in our research, we've looked at the use of motivational interviewing and the treatment of uh uh functional neurologic disorder, and we found that uh patients who received motivational interviewing had increased adherence to psychotherapy, a larger reduction in functional neurologic disorder symptoms, and greater improvement in health uh related quality of life at sixteen week follow-up. And so I'll just finish by saying that this is a um disorder caused by severe life stressors in many cases. It is associated with significant disability and poor quality of life. Psychotherapy and physical therapy are effective treatments, and patients with functional neurologic disorders frequently benefit from access to behavioral healthcare, physical therapy and occupational therapy, which we're able to provide in our uh center, but we hope to expand access uh statewide. And we actually have a meeting uh this Friday with providers from across the state uh to discuss this um treatment regimen. And I'll stop there and take any questions or comments briefly.
Questions or comments? Is coverage a barrier for resource therapies for patients?
Yes, absolutely. So, um, you know, treatment requires um prolonged psychotherapy, and so uh behavioral health coverage is really important for um providing evidence-based treatment. And, and that has been an issue. Uh, we are fortunate to collaborate with um, a couple of different federally mandated uh behavioral health providers, including the Cornell Scott Hill Health Center. So we do have access for, for patients, but, but it is um very important to have uh behavioral health coverage uh to, to, to access uh evidence-based treatment for these patients.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your talk. That was really interesting. Dr. Carpenter is next.
I see that you.
See here, I think you've got the same.
I do. This is the hot seat, I guess, here. Uh, do you want, you want to write yourself a little bit faster?
Um, you can. So I'm Tom Parton. I've been here a long time. And uh, actually, before I came, was interested in this disorder, X line typhus, what we now call X line typhus phasotemia. Um, we run this center here for that disorder under the guise of a large apocalyptic clinic in children, but um XLH um is uh a better name than what I learned this disease as, as a medical student and resident, which was called at the time vitamin D resistant rickets, because there were people that didn't get better who had rickets when you gave them vitamin D. Most of them got better, but these others didn't. And in, in a way, attaching rickets to this name has been unfortunate because it's given the impression that it's a childhood disorder, lifelong disorder. Go to the next. So, so um although uh XLH has a prevalence of about one in twenty thousand um a rare disease, it's the most common cause of inherited rickets. So we do see rickets. That's how the disorder presents in childhood. They have the Boeing. These are, are twins. And you can see on the left, um, the affected, you know, on the right, the, the one that did not get the mutation. It's, it's an X line domino. So it's an unusual disorder in terms of its pattern of inheritance. And it interesting how hearing the other presentations this morning made me think, except, and it made me think of all the overlap that we have with, with some of these things. The one I don't have on slides is the hearing loss. They start, they all have hearing loss at about forty or fifty, but it's variable. And I've set twelve-year-olds for cochlear implants. So, you know, I've got a whole population for you in the, in the hearing disorder clinic. But they, they, they get the rickets. They have soft bones, so they bow, which we call osteomalacia. But like I say, there's more than that. It turns out there's a whole host of other deformities going on. They don't grow well, even if their rickets are treated. They have an unusual head shape. It's, it's more like a skeletal dysplasia. It's almost sort of like achondroplasia light. Their, their pattern of um, the program of, of using the cranial sutures is disrupted. So they have an unusual head shape. They can get uh about a fifty percent incidence of Q R one malformation. They can have, as per the previous talk, uh, previous tarsco seizures, they get uh sereno-myelia. So there's a whole CNS aspect of, of this too. One of the worst features, and we talked to the adults that thought their, who were told a generation ago that their rickets would grow away because they had rickets. Um, but the continued problems with their teeth through the years is, is awful. Um, and that actually in one essay I read from a patient was um uh, the most, the, the worst because it impaired their nutrition, it impaired, you know, it all downhill from there. There's characteristic biochemical findings that focus on the mineral uh feature to the disease. The blood phosphate level is low, so the bones don't mineralize, and that happens because you excrete too much in your urine. And there's a compound issue, and this is kind of why I got interested in this so long ago. That there was more to it, that, that it wasn't just the phosphate leak, but it was also that they had a requirement for uh uh the activated forms of vitamin D. So for years we treated these people with replacement phosphorus and uh activated pharmacologic forms of vitamin D. And, and so everybody was told when they finished growing a generation ago that they're done, they don't need to be seen anymore. And uh with the sort of lifelong follow-up that I've had here in collaboration with the internal medicine endocrine folks, we found that this is a horrendous disease over the lifespan with the later development of um enthesopathy and mineralization of, of tendons and ligaments where they insert into the bone, bridging osteophytes in the spine, universal arthritis, the treatment genders hyperparathyroidism. Some people then have to go to parathyroid surgery. Less common, but extremely severely affecting these patients is spinal stenosis and, and that's excruciating. They all, they all get a little weak. You can, you can get a little bit of that in childhood, but it's really more of an adult feature of the disease. Although we don't see progressive renal disease anymore, years ago, when this was thought to be vitamin D resistance, people just gave loads and loads of vitamin D and they actually got vitamin D intoxicated and would then get renal failure from that. Next. So uh, this is from a, a study done uh as, I don't have time to really say everything, but uh, we now treat this disease a little bit differently when we realize there's a mediating hormone that, that creates the phosphate wasting. But uh, in, in, in the course of those studies, we've talked to people from the other world, and this is uh from an adult uh survey of, of pain. And the, the take home is, look at what's red and yellow. That's extreme severe moderate. And you can see that most of the graph is taken up by those things. And I the consequences of those features I just told you about. There's pain at various intervals. There's stiffness related to those osteophytes and bridging. There's difficulty in functional issues. Um, you know, it's variable, but the graph is, it's showing you how, how confidence is. Now, there's a paper that I just saw in press that has not been printed yet in a journal of environmental research where someone has now gone back and calculated the work loss. And so these people don't, or have a lot of phase of, 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 as adults, uh, work losses. So their incomes are, are affected. And this being a dominant disease, half their kids have it. And what you see in these families is that they don't do well economically. So there's not a, there's, there's not the resources that they have to put together that some of the other disorders have. You can go to the, the next one. Uh, this was a, a recent survey that our um group, uh, there's a support group that our study coordinator actually founded and it's gotten numerous members. And they were surveyed this summer and these were what children and adults with XLH are, are feel is, are, are their most challenging uh symptoms. Um, you can see that dental health appearing for both. I'm gonna, you can, you can go ahead. A couple of slides that I wanted to uh to, to get to where we think the problems are, are for the future. One is that in pediatrics, um, we're worried that we aren't going to see the next generation get trained to like cure this. Um, it turns out, and, and this probably extends to such things as pediatric pulmonary pediatric rheumatology, but endocrinology is right at the top of the list. We're, we're not matching in our fellowship programs. Twenty percent nationally fewer people going into pediatrics this year. I think this year's Mayo graduating class had one person going into pediatrics. People can get on an app and see how much income they lose when they go into a pediatric subspecialty. And so it, it's got to change. And wherever leverage can be applied to make the equitable remuneration for their work. I, I mean, I think we're all in that boat. You're going to see it, you're going to see it in so many of these. One of the things that's really been great over the past year is the legislature's turning around with prior authorization. And because our staff gets overwhelmed, we, we now have for XLH, due to a lot of work that our group did here, an antibody that can be given every two to four weeks that inhibits the phosphate wasting disorder. And it, it's eliminated the four and five times a day dosing of phosphorus that we had to do before. But every time, every time that prescription has to be removed, a ten-page form shows in our nurse's office. And this, you know, we, we're kind of a center for this, and then they just stack up and, and you can't manage it. So getting some of those prior authorization requirements out of the way is, was critical. And, and other places where that burdensome paperwork can be, can be hit at the, at the insurer and, and and, and regulatory level, I think would be um important. Like everything else you've heard about, we have to necessitate a, a complex multi-provided care issue. We get neurosurgery involved if we've got the craniosynostosis. We, we have side-by-side or you can go to the next one. I think uh, this is our metabolic bone clinic. Um, uh, Chris Rayo is our physical therapist and the day-to-day life of these people is really important. Mary Bronson is our nurse coordinator. David Fromberg is in pediatric board pedics, and he actually will does limb work. So he actually will do the adults that get the deformities from this too. Uh, Pam Hu joined us last year in pediatric endocrine and is interested in bone disease. And as of this month, we were fortunate enough to pull a big coup and get Med Peds train Peter Tevin uh here from the Mayo Clinic, who's a bone expert that I've known for years. And he is uh going to be particularly helpful in the transition period of getting these kids from childhood care to adult care. Um, and the next one is our research team, which Peter and, uh, is part of. We got this rolling to a major effort uh about twenty years ago with an NIH sponsored uh uh Center of Research Translation Grant that Carl and Sonia and I uh led. And that set the network for a, a lot of industry collaboration, the development of the new medicines. And now I spent all morning working out a protocol for a new version of that. And uh it's got to get to a patient who's waiting for me from long night, two o'clock. But these are our study coordinators. And Clarence Bergwick, of course, who's specialist in a related form of hypophosphatemia that seats a lot of the XLH adult patients as well. I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. All right. And certainly if you'll have questions for Dr. Carpenter's email, man, I'll get you in touch. All right. We are moving to the iridocdecent clinic. Dr. Chen is also with us.
Hi, everyone. My name is Laura Chen. I am a pediatric pulmonologist and one of the coordinators for our iridocdecent program and um, who are we? We are a multidisciplinary team. Um, who, as our name describes, we take care of children with uh breathing, eating, swallowing disorders. Um, and so we are a multidisciplinary team, um, of many subspecialists, ear, nose and throat, um, pulmonology, myself, along with Dr. Shears, um, speech language pathology, nutrition, gastroenterology, pediatric surgery, um, and our amazing nurse coordinator, Eva, who's in the middle right there. Um, and so we um, we receive lots and lots of referrals. Uh, to date, we've seen over nine hundred patients and we currently have uh about three hundred active patients that we follow. Um, and our goal is to help um families with diagnosing um and treating and um caring for children uh who might have feeding and uh breathing issues. Um, and the way that we do that um is by seeing these families or patients all together in clinic um so that these families, they don't need to go and see multiple providers, uh, go to like six clinic visits, but they go to like six clinic visits, but they see us all together in one place. It's a little like speed dating for us, but I think families are hopefully appreciative where they just have to see us once in clinic and their initial visit and follow-ups. And we also provide something called a triple endoscopy or triple scopes where when we want to get down to the bottom of why is it that these children are having trouble with breathing, swallowing or feeding, we will perform a direct bronchoscopy. ENT will perform direct bronchoscopy. I will do a flexible bronchoscopy. And GI will do their endoscopy altogether under one anesthesia. Sometimes pediatric surgery may get involved too, if it's a patient that they follow so that we limit the exposure of anesthesia to these patients. So who do we take care of? We take care of a lot of children with ranging from premature to children with rare genetic disorders. Like we've got two little cuties with Char syndrome who might have functional and structural issues, upper airway, lower airway abnormalities. They might have a tracheostomy, they might have G-tube, Down syndrome patients, congenital heart disease, cerebral palsy and more. But we really, we take care of the gamut and in particular, lots of children with multi-organ, multi-system diseases. So currently we are doing an active study on about 485 children who have been referred to a clinic from 2014 to 2019, who have undergone a swallow evaluation. So a lot of the time, if we've got a patient who is having trouble with, let's say they're gagging or they're choking when they drink water or eat food, they'll undergo something called the Modified Baryum Swallow Study, which is a series where the speech-language pathologist, health physiology will have the child drink liquids of different consistencies and they get a series of x-rays and we see where does the liquid go. And so we're looking at outcomes from the Modified Baryum Swallow Studies and how it relates to the actual findings from the study. We're also looking at controversies and disagreements among ENT, pulmonology and GI providers and the management of children with iridocystic conditions. And I have to say, yes, pulmonologists probably don't practice all the same way. And so there are lots of disagreements and, and we're trying to find a better, a more streamlined standard way of caring for these children. And then we're also in the process of doing a quality improvement project on how can we help children who have trouble with managing their upper airway supressions, especially in children with cerebral palsy. So resources that are needed. So what do our families need? I think if you can take away one thing would be, from my short talk, would be home nursing. So last week, I, we saw a patient who's 15 months old, ex-22-weeker, who has a tracheostomy and G-tube, and the only caregiver is her mother. She, mother is now not working and she was discharged from a long-term care facility and was promised a home nurse. That fell through and over the last six months, she's been hospitalized three times for respiratory and feeding issues. And so it's, you know, the burden becomes on the family, on the patient. It's dangerous to only have one trained caregiver when you're dealing with a patient with a complex, with a critical airway situation, tracheostomy. So I saw recently that Connecticut passed a bill to allow outside nurses from outside states to come and practice in Connecticut. But let's not forget about pediatric nurses. And that's to address the nursing shortage. And so a lot of our families are just, parents will do anything for their children, right? But it only goes so far and we need to support these families with home nursing. And then birth to three services, just like Dr. Wine's that mentioned. A lot of the children that we care for might have hearing delays or they might need other special services. So many of our patients and families are waiting for birth to three. Like I think I have a family waiting, their child's about to turn three and they're still waiting for an evaluation and services. So I think that is more because of the, the lack of pediatric PTO2 speech providers. And it might be probably related to the reimbursement of these pediatric providers. So, you know, I, I think addressing that is very important. And what we need is, which we will figure out as a clinical administrator, because we've got lots of patients, we're trying to get them in, and a research assistant. I, I was, we've got clinics, the first, once a third, Wednesday afternoons. We also operate in the OR and we're Children's Hospital on Level Two. And this is our clinic contact information. Please email me for any questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, Laura, can I ask you, what the baby was this like?
Yes.
Patients from birth to three?
Oh, I, that I don't know, but exactly, but I know that families are waiting for months. We sometimes they hear.
Okay, I will meet you later. I want to ask you a question.
Oh, yeah.
We were at a meeting yesterday with the Chris.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Doing Tom Ford?
It would be quickly. Put your hand behind.
One of the constant themes we hear from the, from patients that, that come to the RDA is the need that they have holistic care, not just from physicians, but also to physical therapy and, and also a care continuum of physicians. Because oftentimes a rare disease does not fit me into one subspecialty practice. So I really appreciate your approach there, that you have both, both different complementary physicians that, that can address these challenges. A question for you is that oftentimes it still seems that there's, there's a challenging path to come up with defined diagnosis for rare disease patients. And this often, then disease progresses, challenges occur. I wonder how you're tackling this, because I can imagine just thinking about cystic fibrosis, other fibrotic gland diseases. You must see the gamut of rare disease patients come in. And how are you triaging them and, and then trying to get them to the next, I'm sorry, tertiary practice or how they might, you know, fit into the rare disease patient space?
Absolutely. That's, thank you for that question. Yeah, so sometimes it's a challenge because we don't know what the prognosis will look like. And Michelle definitely comes in handy when we send them over to genetics or to other subspecialists who might help us figure out what the underlying diagnosis is. But sometimes we just don't know. And until there's that genetic discovery of what that patient has. And so we just continue to support the families and in terms of like what their feeding program is, they're on like thickened or not thickened, just G-tube bed and making sure that we support them in terms of their airway clearance, if they're aspirating. But it's, yeah, we try to tailor it to each case and also what the family wishes to do too.
Thank you so much. We have to hold other questions right now, so please reach out. So we're gonna move on now to, we're to the neuromuscular. We start with the CMT program and then we'll do the pediatric MBA clinic.
So thank you so much for the invitation, a chance to talk to you about our CMT program at Yale. So I'm Sasha Zimkowick. I'm one of the neuromuscular neurologists at Yale. And so right now I'm going to, let me just try to advance. So in, back in 2022, we have established our CMT Association Center of Excellence at Yale, which is one of more than 50 similar centers nationwide. And our center takes care of CMT patients who are adults. And I'm one of two clinical directors. The other clinical director is Dr. Irving O from Orthopedic Surgery. And our goal has been to promote research and clinical excellence in the care of patients with hereditary neuropathies. So Sharcomaritut disease itself is a, is defined as a hereditary disorder of the peripheral nervous system with neuropathy as its primary clinical manifestation. And overall, it affects one in 2,500 adults. So it has been estimated that in Connecticut, there are approximately between 1,400 and 1,600 pediatric and adult patients with CMT. There are over 100 genes that have been identified as cause of CMT and related disorders. But more than 60% of all CMT cases are caused by mutations in one of the four genes that are associated with most common variants of CMT. And at our center, we have been following patients with different variants of CMT and their profile is similar as, as in other larger centers nationwide and internationally. So genes that are associated with CMT regulate some of the critical physiologic function of peripheral nerves and their mild sheet. And the, and the diagnosis of CMT has been closely linked to the explosive growth of genetic testing and technology that was requiring days, 20, 30 years ago and now can be done within 15, 30 minutes. So in 1990s, we were aware of only around 10 genes that are associated with different variants of CMT. And right now, the panels for testing of patients with hereditary neuropathy actually cover 100 genes. And it's, it's done much faster and at a fraction of cost. And it has really helped us to diagnose these patients early. As many of the patients who were previously thought to have some refractory autoimmune or other neuropathies actually had the CMT. So management of CMT is based on the treatment of the disorder that's causing the neuropathy, which can be type-specific and non-specific. And with the, and with the CMT, for many decades, we haven't had any medications to treat. And right now, there is at least one new medication that's on the horizon that's probably going to be approved for one variant of CMT in the near future. Then orthopedic surgeons are helping us with the treatment of different musculoskeletal disorders associated with CMT, including various deformities and scoliosis and the different modalities of supportive treatment. And on the right side of this slide, you, you can see various treatments, various experimental treatments for CMT that are currently at different stages of clinical studies for various types of CMT. As you can see, that most of the treatments are targeting, targeting CMT 1A, which is by far the most common variant of CMT. Different modalities of CMT-supported treatment include physical and occupational therapy, treatment of different types of pain and mood disorder, occupational rehabilitation, and also genetic counseling. And the, so the future directions of our CMT program include expansion of multidisciplinary care for CMT patients, multi-departmental and inter-institutional collaboration, development of a translational research and gene discovery program. While we are promoting early diagnosis, providing standard of clinical care and category treatments for patients with different types of hereditary neuropathies. And I would thank you for your attention. I will be happy to take any of your questions if there is time.
That was fantastic. Thank you so much. We have time for maybe a 30-second question, if anybody has one. Otherwise, we're running behind. Otherwise, I'm gonna ask you to reach out to me and let me get you in contact with each other. Thank you so much. All right. Louise is gonna present now the other, that was, that's more of an adult-focused clinic, although certainly expanding to be both an adult and pediatric-focused clinic. Louise is gonna talk to us about our pediatric MBA clinic.
Hi, I'm Louise Lanoa. I'm the nurse coordinator for the muscular dystrophy clinic. In our clinic, we have, we're a PPMD certified center, which is Parent Project Muscular Dystrophy. And we're also an MDA care center. And we provide multidisciplinary clinic with neurology, pulmonary, cardiology, ortho, psychologists. We have social work, PTOT and dietitian. Our social work and our psychologists focus on emotional support and resources for parents and families with school issues, immigration issues, legal issues. We also work on school and home equipment needs for, whether it's pulmonary equipment or PT or OT equipment. We round every, every clinic before clinic as a multidisciplinary team. And everybody shares their expertise and perspectives to provide the best care for the patients coming into clinic that day and what their needs may be. If there's issues going on that need to be discussed with the team, we do that at that time as well. At each clinic, we offer the genetic testing. We have x-rays, PFTs, lab work, echos, EKGs, MRIs and sleep studies. They're diagnosed and treated at our clinic. We go for a lot of the specialty drugs that are out now and the gene therapy for SMA patients. In summary, it's a specialized medical center with comprehensive and collaborative care that we provide for MDA patients.
Thank you so much for, for bringing us up to date on that. So, you know, any questions for Louise on the pediatric part of the MBA? Louise, thank you, thank you so much. We really appreciate that. I don't think, Dr. Mr. R, is anyone from the Goshay program on board right now? I don't think they're, they're here. I didn't see them here. So I'm gonna actually move on to Dr. Zhang, who is gonna present about the new UDN site at Yale.
Okay. All right. Welcome, everyone. Come back to returning to your campus again. I appreciate Michelle put an extremely informative resource together, even including myself. I hope you find it useful for you all. So we're gonna show you very exciting development and it's the name. We got a starting couple of months ago, which is NIH support for the Undiagnosed Disease Center of Excellence, the next slide. So it just announced two months ago and we were luckily one of the 12th side for the next four year and nationally. And we are the only two new side for, for this particular network, next slide. As you know, just keep going. For sure, you all know, so that's a significant fraction of a disease, which is a little early. We have a rare disease that we may undiagnose, probably 40, 50%. That's the challenge for sure. And on the other hand, as a disease, undiagnosed is not a rare disease for sure. But that is pretty much under walking, lacking a lot of the understanding often time. Next slide. So I have more slides than I need, so I can stop anytime. The key information is, is hope it's a very, very useful resource for the patient with this in the state. And also our net probably cover an entire new England region, six, seven states too. It's national program. A lot of the history, this started from Beagaw and NIH for the UDP program almost 15 years ago, then come down to became network with next advance. A UDN 2014, which is larger NIH support for the last 10 years. So now we are on the UDN phase three, next slide. Just go to make quickly in the first phase, we want to have a seven side across the country. Next slide. Phase two have 12 side across the country. Now, now come down to the phase three, which is again, some side will not be able to renew. We luckily we're getting into as two new side, next slide. So here's the sort of network structure. It's very comprehensive, tried to figure out first, but rare disease is not easy to figure out in the hospital. Second, it's very likely rare disease. We don't know what's the IDR. And right now, we will be able to understand them by studying them, discover them, and also promoting the faster or, or better quality of diagnosis returned to the hospital and clinic. Next slide. So let's go over, but that's the kind of, now interestingly, the SUDM foundation just created last year. And I hope that resource will get in more and more so that rare disease community can benefit for this UDM foundation. I think they're doing very well for fundraising right now. But it's clear it's a national organization and I don't know how much individual state would get a benefit for that particular. So the goal of the phase three is clearly to try to promoting to more community outreach. And phase one, phase two, folks, some pretty much a lot of, I guess it's 80%. It's a Caucasian or non, wide, his, non-Hispanic wide kind of population. Also then the phase three and emphasize we will reach out for underserved population, uninsured population, minority population for the focus of this one. Go ahead. minority population for the focus of this one. Go ahead. So here's the year structure. I will not go detail one by one. Just shows you it's a larger effort and including a lot of people talking, speaking today and contributing to the program. So, um, next slide. So we, the one of the key factor, we're gonna reach out for the minority population. We actually choosing the Fairhaven Community Center, which is ninety percent uninsured, underserved population, probably ninety percent as a Hispanic population too. So, next slide. So here's the entire team. Next, you can see many people, my core team people are here, including Michelle leading the clinical side. And it's a larger team effort across the years, school of medicine, and you in the hospital to contribute this program. So we hope that we work in next four years with the support of management and real contributor on the community, where this is community next four years. That's it.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Dr. Zhang before we move on on the program? Certainly, again, same thing. If you have questions or comments for this or collaborations, please reach out to me and I will put you in touch with Dr. Zhang. Okay, so I think we are now for the immunodeficiency disorders. Is Dr. Oh, perfect. He is. That's because he's here to talk to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me. Okay, so my name is John Custer. I'm an assistant professor of clinical medicine here at Yale in allergy and immunology. And I'd just like to talk to you about our primary immunodeficiency clinics that we have. I'll just briefly start with, you know, what is immunodeficiency? I'll talk about our clinics and then at the end, I'll just mention some of the challenges that we face. I think this is a good picture to start with because some of the people in the audience may actually be familiar with David Vedder, who is known, you know, in the media in the seventies as the boy in the bubble. And I bring this up as kind of a somewhat severe, maybe one of the most severe examples of an immune deficiency. And in this picture, he's actually inside a, you know, it's essentially a spacesuit that was designed by NASA. Because he was born without, you know, roughly any functioning immune system. So for most of his life, he actually had to live inside this kind of like vacuum bubble. And this is one of the rare moments where he was able to get out and, you know, have somewhat more of a normal life for a child. So moving on to, you know, like I said, what is a primary immunodeficiency or PID? So these are inborn, rare, and chronic conditions. And basically, this is where a part of the body's immune system is missing, where it doesn't function properly. These can affect both children and adults, and they're associated with clinically significant severe infections, which are often recurrent or persistent or also unusual. These are sometimes also associated with autoimmunity or inflammation, but not always. And underlying the name of primary immunodeficiency is that these have an underlying genetic association. Four hundred and eighty-five internationally recognized genes were associated with PID as of two thousand twenty-two. And this number is growing. Now there's probably at least six hundred or more. So I did mention unusual, severe, different kinds of infections as warning signs. I'll just highlight on the left here, this is one of the graphics that is used from the Jeffrey Modell Foundation, which is one of the pediatric primary immunodeficiency groups. And it says the ten warning signs of primary immunodeficiency. I know it's too small to read, but I'll go over these. You know, one example is four or more new ear infections within the same year, two or more serious sinus infections within one year, two or more months of antibiotics with little effect, two or more pneumonias within one year. You may see failure to thrive, such as infants who fail to gain weight or grow normally. We may see skin infections, such as recurrent deep skin or organ abscesses as well. In addition, we may see something like persistent thrush in the mouth or other fungal infections of the skin. And then sometimes what we see is that there's a need for intravenous antibiotics in order to clear these infections, meaning that these are harder to treat and more intense. Something else we might see are two or more deep-seated infections, including something called sepsis, where you have systemic infection, which can be life-threatening as well. And then, very importantly, number ten is a family history of primary immunodeficiency. Because as I mentioned, genetics play a strong role. On the right, I'll just briefly mention, this is the Immune Deficiency Foundation, kind of like a similar awareness flyer, but it's mainly for adults. And again, it says, do you have infections that are recurrent, unusual, persistent, or severe? So that's what it is. Our immunology clinics, on the other hand, is where we actually see these patients. For the pediatrics, our site is in New Haven. For the adults, we actually have immunodeficiency clinics in multiple sites, including North Haven, Milford, Bridgeport, and Old Saybrook. We, both our pediatric and the adult clinics focus on clinical evaluation and identification of an immunodeficiency. We do advanced laboratory and genetic evaluation, and then, of course, the clinical management. Our clinics require a referral for the evaluation. And I put in our general website just for the primary immunodeficiency program here as well, which can be shared later. So I'll finish up by just briefly mentioning some challenges. PID is under-recognized, so we do need improved awareness in the referring provider groups, such as primary care physicians and pediatricians. We need improved awareness in, well, actually specifically in underserved patient populations. We also know that many forms of PID have variable symptoms. And this can also make it, you know, kind of hard to identify which complicates and compounds these two issues. Next, PID diagnosis requires specialized testing. We know that early diagnosis leads to cost savings. And a good example of this is the boy in the bubble who had SCID, which we call severe combined immunodeficiency. And we found that with these kind of early screening programs, early management that was a result of these decreased morbidity, mortality, and, you know, the overall costs. You know, for other PIDs, the genetic testing, you know, as one of the specialized tests, it's not universally covered and often requires lengthy approval process, which is, you know, to be honest, quite frustrating for both the patient and the care team. You know, one of these things I personally experienced myself, and it's this prior authorization process. I actually just had to do one today. So probably one of the things that is common to a lot of rare disease. And then finally, I'll just finish up by saying, primary immunodeficiency mechanisms, like a lot of rare diseases are not fully understood. But the ongoing research support and the research that's been happening has allowed continued advancement. And what this really allows us is to continue growing development of targeted therapies, better identification and monitoring of patients with PID. And, you know, at the end of the day, all of the same goals that we all have, which is better patient outcomes. All right. Thank you so much. That's my last slide.
Thank you so much. Any quick questions? All right, we're gonna move on then to our pediatric liver disease program. And there's probably gonna present who has been on. Hopefully she's still able to have been on. Yeah, there she is.
I'm here.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. I'm Rema Fawaz. I will stick to very, even shorter than five minutes. Can you see my slide set?
Yes.
Let me see. Is that better? Do you see my, excuse me, can you hear me and see me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. And you see my slides as all together or just one?
We can see the slides and the notes.
Uh, yeah, there's no, it's okay. Sorry. I'm trying to. I'm gonna just, I'm sorry, do this and do it again. Okay, this is better. Thank you for including us in this presentation. I will be brief because there's a lot of people to discuss. And there are other colleagues of mine that will present, such as Dr. To will talk about the Wilson's Program. But we are, we, the, me and Dr. Fugks are transplant hepatologists. And we see most of the, on the clinical side, the liver patient. And Dr. Yimla Mai is our researcher, doing both basic and translation and research. And let me move. We operate from, we see patients in Howard Avenue, Long Worth Park Avenue, Greenwich, and Trumbull. And we have increased our volume because of the demand also, almost to fifteen hundred visits a year. This was doubled in the past two years. We hopefully will actually recruit one more person to help us with the service as we get more busy on the transplant side. We do have a pediatric liver transplant program that was launched in two thousand and seven. We are the only pediatric liver transplant program in Connecticut. And we have done anywhere from three to seven transplants per year. I wanna do put a note here that we did put our program on elective hold between January two thousand twenty-three, January two thousand twenty-four, because our transplant, our pediatric transplant surgeon moved. And we did that preemptively to give the best care for our children. All three of us work in medical education. We're involved in the medical school workshops, lectures, and we're on national committees. And we see a array of patients really with, that would classify as rare disease, the allogeneal patients. We are part of the Gala, which is the Global Allogene Alliance Registry. And we have probably fifteen patients on that registry, which is a good number for a small program. Obviously, we see the autoimmune liver disease, biliary atresia. And I'm happy to report that we have our outcome after Kasiport interostomy is better than national average. Obviously, we see all these rare diseases that you're very aware of. And very specifically, we, we take a lot of pride by being a site for the Wilson's Registry. But I will not talk too much because Dr. To will discuss that separately. But I do wanna point out something unique and, you know, we've been called upon from the rest of the country because we see a big cohort of genetically diagnosed Wilson's disease. So preclinical disease that hopefully will come up with some guidance soon. So that is very unique. And our adult program, Dr. To will talk with the gene therapy. We are involved in multiple research, national research study. We're part of the acute liver failure immune-mediated response network. This was also put on hold. We're still, the IRB is open. But when we obviously closed our program, put it on hold for the liver transplant, we had to put this on hold too. Hopefully, we'll get it back running very soon since the IRB is still open. We're obviously part of the pediatric liver transplant studies and multiple site projects, including viral vaccination in these patients' portal hypertension registry, and as I mentioned before, the Gala study. We're very active in general as a team, and these were our publication in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three academic year. I didn't include this year because it hasn't been done. And I will stop sharing and take questions. I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I thought I have to be very brief, so I was very brief.
We appreciate that because we are, we are running behind. Thank you so much. Any quick questions here today? All right. So we will, we're gonna move on to some cardiology here. So Dr. Beach, if she, Dr. Beach was physically here but had to leave because of another commitment. I think we were running a little bit behind, but she's on. So I'm gonna share her slides. And she's gonna give us a presentation. I think she's actually pulled over in transit to help us do this. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I actually stopped at the North Haven Clinic and stopped in the parking lot to be able to talk. Perfect. I'll start. Yeah, well, you just get that up.
There you go. Go ahead.
Excellent. So I'm Cheyenne Beach. I am a pediatric electrophysiologist. And I run this family inherited arrhythmia clinic with Dr. Rachel Lampert, who, Rachel, I don't know if you're still there, so maybe you raise your hand. Yeah. She's an adult electrophysiologist and also a really exceptional researcher, who we're lucky to have at Yale. Go ahead, Michelle. Thanks. Um, so we together care for genetic arrhythmia syndromes. These include mostly long QT syndrome, Brugada syndrome, CPVT, which is catecholymnergic polymorphic ventricular tachycardia, a pretty rare, but the most deadly inherited arrhythmia syndrome that we care for, short QT syndrome, arrhythmogenic cardiomyopathy, something called progressive cardiac conduction disease or PCCD. And we also care for undiagnosed. So we care for family history of sudden cardiac death unspecified kind of thing. We can go to the next slide. Perfect. So there's more and more being written about guidance and expert consensus about how a collaborative effort, how a, you know, care for the whole family is what's really needed when patients who have inherited arrhythmia syndromes come up. So this was an expert consensus statement from two thousand thirteen, and I love how this is phrased. A structured inherited arrhythmia or heart disease clinic provides the platform for optimized multidisciplinary evaluation and management of patients and families with suspected inherited heart diseases. The collective efforts of the core staff and access to a variety of experts in related disciplines will result in improved quality of care, patient satisfaction, and improvement in appropriate use of diagnostic testing and therapeutic intervention. The promise of such a clinic structure is lower overall cost and improvement in patient outcomes. We can go next. Yeah, perfect. So this is in my head what used to happen. So I started here in two thousand seventeen. Rachel's been here for longer than I have. And this is what we used to do. I would see a child who had a family history of, say, long QT syndrome. And I would get the story from the parent. Sometimes the parent who's not affected or whose family isn't affected. And we would make two phone calls during the visit, get approval to see the affected relatives' medical record. Then Rachel would be seeing an, you know, an aunt or an uncle. And we'd make so many phone calls. We would duplicate, triplicate our efforts and end up in a result that we realized probably wasn't as good as it could be if we were there together, taking care of families together. So with this, we decided to put together the Yale Family Inherited Arrhythmia Clinic. So not just providing comprehensive inherited arrhythmia care, but, but comprehensive family inherited arrhythmia clinic care. And we are one of fewer than five programs in the country that is organized this way, that will literally see the family together. So we can go to the next slide. The way that our family inherited arrhythmia program is structured is we see people in North Haven. Funny that I'm sitting right here. Every other Thursday morning, so two half-days a month. And I run this program with Dr. Lampert and my pediatric electrophysiology colleague, Dr. Jeff Benoker. And we'll, we arrange it so that we'll see children and family members. So parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, whoever it is, together, literally in the same room at the same time. So sometimes we'll have two people for an appointment together. Sometimes we'll have six people for an appointment together. Each family has an hour-long slot. Sometimes we use it all, sometimes we don't. And it is amazing how we have been able to really streamline the care that we're providing. I put that little icon on the right because this is a, this is a collaboration, not just amongst ourselves and with our patients and families, but also with all of the other care providers that are caring for these patients. So often, you know, somebody's uncle will have a cardiologist who's taking great care of them. And that family member still has something that they can gain from being seen with their family members to help put pieces of the family together, help figure out what the genotype is, what the phenotype is, who else needs to be evaluated. Maybe just come to actually get the genetic testing through our clinic, because a lot of outside non-Yale providers don't, don't do genetic testing or prefer not to do genetic testing. So whether we're the primary cardiologists for these patients or we're working together with their other medical team, we can do whatever the patients and the families and the referring providers need us to do. We can go to the next slide. This is an example of a family we saw recently. We have the proband there with the red arrow. This is an adult who had a very scary-looking EKG in the setting of a fever. And when somebody asked the great question, he'd had many maternal family members who had died suddenly at a young age. And we were able to put this family together. So you can see those affected are those who were shaded. And we had these three families. So we had a brother and two adult sisters. And then we had all the children in clinic together. This is something that would have taken probably ten times as long and I think resulted in a lot of satisfaction for this family. We can go to the next slide. Related to our family inherited arrhythmia clinic is something called Project Atom. Project Atom is a, it's a national network of affiliates. Um, Project Adam is a, um, it's a national network of affiliates, mostly children's hospitals, but not all, um, that work together to try to uh make schools and communities as safe as possible. A lot of this is providing automatic external defibrillators or AEDs, helping schools to come up with emergency action plans. Um, and it is amazing how many lives have been, been saved this way. Uh, so Yale is the um Connecticut affiliate of Project Adam. Um, and we help with a number of other places through New England, because there are a few other states in New England that don't have affiliate sites yet. So we're able to fill that in, which is a um, a cool little, you know, community outreach that we do. We can go to the next one. Um, we do, uh, we participate in a lot of research, although it's um some in collaboration through the clinic and some not. Um, Rachel Lampert is an extraordinary researcher who's done a lot of work into, in the um how do we have our patients who have life-threatening diseases, who have implantable defibrillators, who have frightening family histories? How do we get them to live their normal lives? And she's really shown that, that these patients are safe as long as they see their medical providers and they follow the plan of action that was given to them by their medical providers. They really don't have a very high rate of um, of sudden death or of adverse events happening. That's the biggest research that Rachel's doing, and we have a smattering of other things that we're participating in. Next slide, I think. This is my last slide, I think. So um, there are a number of clinical and legislative needs that we have um in the family inherited arrhythmia clinic. Research support is something that we all need, as we, we've talked about that this afternoon. Um, access to AEDs is really tricky, so we do have as a care plan for a lot of patients, especially those who do not need implanted defibrillators, that they should have access to an automated defibrillator. And uh, many insurances do not cover these, and they're, they're well over a thousand dollars. Um, we have a few community partners who work closely with us to be able to provide AEDs at discounted rates um when we think that families need it, but this is really a struggle. Um, schools also have, uh, Connecticut's pretty well off in terms of automated defibrillators, but there's this little asterisk in the legislation saying that Connecticut schools have to have AEDs unless they can't afford it. And a lot of schools say, we can't afford it, so we're not able to do it. Um, and it would be the communities that wouldn't surprise you, communities who otherwise are probably at higher risk um for having events happen. Emergency action plans are huge, so the, the number of stories we hear about such-and-such volleyball player died suddenly because she lost consciousness during a volleyball game. There was an AED, but it was in the nurse's office and it was locked, and nobody could get in. Um, and so it's not just access to the AEDs, but it's, it's the legislation that we don't have in Connecticut about the need for emergency action plans, the need for CPR instructions, both as part of school learning, um, but I think it should be more of communities in general. Um, and then awareness about the Good Samaritan Law. When you actually ask people on the ground, um, why they don't provide resuscitation, many people say, because I don't wanna get in trouble, I don't wanna do anything wrong. And if we can just give people the information that Connecticut has a Good Samaritan Law, you cannot get in legal trouble if, if you're doing a good deed and trying to help somebody in need. Um, and also some, some simple information about how easy an AED is and how pretty straightforward CPR can be. Um, we think that that legislation could go a long way. I think that's it. I put just my contact information. Rachel, I'm sure you wouldn't mind my saying, your email is rachel.lampert L A M P E R T at Yale dot E U.
All right.
Feel free to add, Rachel, if there's anything.
Great talk, Cheyenne.
Cheyenne, thank you so much. That was fantastic. I agree.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, yes, thank you. All right, um, if there's more stuff again for the inherited arrhythmia, like everything else, reach out. Jessica, I think, is here, so I'm gonna move on. Jessica's gonna talk to us a little bit more about the pediatric cardio genics clinic.
Yes, I'll be quick. Um, hi, my name is Jessica. I'm a genetic counselor. I work in the pediatric cardio genetics clinic, where we focus primarily on congenital heart disease and congenital arrhythmia. And we've talked about this quite a bit, because there's been a couple multi-disciplinary clinics um presented today, but no, it's not the same, right? From the patient and family perspective, the draw to multi-disciplinary clinics. So know that um kids with complex genetic conditions um have more outpatient visits per year than kids without. Um, families often complain that it's a struggle to coordinate care between multiple providers, so kids with multiple teams, multiple care teams, uh, it's hard to get those providers to talk to each other. Um, and then all these visits present financial and logistical challenges for families. So getting to clinics, parking, getting time off work, all of these things make it difficult for families to come to all these appointments. So multi-disciplinary clinics can help reduce number of visits as well as get those providers in the same room, talking to each other in my time about shared patients. Um, and specifically, the goal of the cardio genetics clinic is to provide coordinated genetics and cardiology care for patients with congenital heart disease, they are top of these, and otherwise meaningful genetics and cardiology care. And this is our team. Um, so myself is a genetic counselor, and then Dr. Buckner is our cardiologist. She specializes in congenital heart disease and neurotopathy management. She's also a great resource, because she's been um part of the PCGC, which is a huge research consortium doing research on genetic causes of congenital heart disease um for a very long time. And then Dr. Hervey Serrano is our geneticist and genetics expert. Um, and then besides some animations, you know, there's four um main types of patients we see in the clinic. So family history of heart disease or sudden death, um known genetic conditions that come with um either congenital heart disease or neurotopathy, so Mark Williams, low speeds, other connective tissue conditions, as well as um newmans with congenital heart disease, Char syndrome with congenital heart disease, uh, George syndrome, things like that. Um, and then the bottom two categories are patients without genetic diagnosis at this time, but congenital heart disease with high suspicion that genetic testing would come back higher suspicion, I should say, that genetic testing would come back positive. So congenital heart disease with either congen- multiple congenital anomalies in addition, or neural development issues as well. And then our kind of call to action, uh, we're still growing. And one thing that we would really like to be able to provide families is referral pipelines to the other specialties that they'll need. So another struggle for these families is finding providers that understand their genetic condition or um they generally had good experiences with, are easy to access, easy to um ask questions, things like that. Um, so specifically, if you are a patient, family, or provider, um, who knows orthopedists, ophthalmologists, adult cardiologists, neurologists, psychology, or GI, or any other specialty with providers who know a little bit about genetic conditions and patients have had good experiences with, we would love to hear from you. Um, that's a big um area of need that we're looking to build out moving forward. And then just contact info, so there's my email, as well as scheduling lines for genetics and pediatric cardiology, and either of them will be able to get to you.
Jessica, thank you so much. Uh, any quick questions for Jessica before we move on? Okay. All right, so we are gonna move now to the fetal care and prenatal diagnostics. And Dr. Kohari was, has been on for a long time, and she's still, but she's still may have to hang in there, I know she's also in clinic.
Hi, everybody. You can see my slides, okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, so I'm uh Catherine Kohari. I am a maternal fetal medicine specialist um at Yale. And uh, we just wanted to spend a couple minutes to chat about our services and why um our practice might uh appeal to those of you um on the advisory council. Um, okay, there we go. So what is maternal fetal medicine? Just briefly, for those of you who may not be familiar, we're also known as high-risk obstetricians or perinatology. And we care for pregnant people with complex medical conditions. So in the case of this um context, we would be caring for those um people of reproductive age who are pregnant that may have some of the rare conditions that you all um champion. So for example, patients with sickle cell disease, patients with cystic fibrosis, Noonan syndrome, et cetera, um, are now doing well enough to uh achieve reproductive um capabilities. And so when pregnant, we would be caring for them in our office. Um, on the other hand, we also are the ones that are often making fetal diagnoses of rare kind of um genetic conditions. So this would be doing diagnostic genetic testing, um also finding anatomic abnormalities with prenatal ultrasound is a big part of our practice. And then developing care plans for both mom and baby during pregnancy, during delivery, and in the postpartum um care. And in our practices, in our offices, we have lots of different um aspects to our care that I won't um outline in detail here, but you can read on the slide. We have lots of locations throughout, um basically the I ninety-five corridor in um Connecticut and a, a satellite office in Waterbury. Um, and so as I alluded to, we have lots of different services in our office, and two that I will highlight today um are our prenatal or reproductive genetics program and our fetal care center. So our reproductive um genetic counseling program, we have two um prenatal genetic counselors in our practice. Julie McGlynn is our head genetic counselor and Bill Campbell. Um, and these are the folks that are doing the prenatal, the genetic counseling for pregnant people, either prior to conception or once they have conceived, to discuss um the risk of genetic conditions for their pregnancy or to discuss their own carrier risks um for some recessive conditions. We work hand-in-hand with the medical genetics department as well, especially as we care for either pregnant moms with genetic conditions or um are having, expecting a baby with a rare um condition. Uh, so we perform consultation um as well for complex family has uh history. Um, and we also do diagnostic genetic testing, so that is something called a CVS, where we sample the uh placenta using ultrasound guidance. I have a little clip here, just this uh bright white area here is actually the, the needle, and we're placing that into the placenta and sampling a little bit of tissue there to send for direct genetic testing. Um, and our counselors spend most of their time actually helping to interpret and explain results to families. Uh, we also help with insurance coverage and hoping that most of these tests are paid for. And there's lots of different research projects we have ongoing in this space. Um, and then we have our um fetal care center. The co-directors of our fetal care center are Ozam Batiar from MFM and Dina Ferdinand from pediatric cardiology. This is a multidisciplinary program housed in our office. We do prenatal ultrasound, fetal therapy, also genetics, pediatric cardiology. We have a specific nurse coordinator that helps these families navigate the challenges of um finding out they have a pregnancy that is um affected with a life um affecting diagnosis. We set up consultation with pediatric subspecialists, and we also have a whole subsection for palliative and bereavement care as part of this group. We are also part of NAFNET, which is the North American Fetal Therapy Network. And this is really a great brain trust of fetal therapy networks around the country that are coming up with novel and innovative ways to treat um fetuses before they're even born for a variety of conditions. And so our goal is really to identify patients who need to be transferred at Yale New Haven Children's Hospital um versus those that can remain perhaps at their community um hospitals. We do, as I alluded to, lots of subspecialty coordination, and some of the fetal therapies that are out there is as though, um, as many of you may not be aware, is we do things like multifetal reductions. We do different ablation techniques. We do a fetoscopic laser. So photoscopy means that we're actually putting a camera into the amniotic sac. We're looking at the placenta, and then we're actually burning abnormal connections of blood vessels on the surface of the placenta. We have done in utero spina bifida repair at Yale. We do fetal transfusions for um anemia. We place shunts, and we do specialized delivery procedures, something called an exit procedure. So here's just a little clip uh of us doing a fetal transfusion. So again, this white line here is um the needle, it's inserted into the umbilical cord, and we're actually giving this baby blood um because it has profound anemia. So as one might uh uh think that, given all these different therapies, there are ways that we're now being able to expand some of these techniques um to treat problems as early as possible. Um, and so we're looking at fetal gene therapy. So Dr. Dave Stittleman, who's in our pediatric surgery department, has been working with um nanoparticles to deliver um gene-edited um treatments for things like beta thalassemia and sickle cell disease. So prior to the baby even being born, can we be delivering um uh edited genes to um avoid any of the sequelae of having full-blown sickle cell disease, for example? Um, also, treatment of cystic fibrosis using nanoparticles has also been um something that people have been researching. So again, kind of getting uh to these problems as early as possible to affect um good outcomes for children. Uh, another area of treatment is fetal enzymatic therapy. Um, and this is really being done right now, just at UCSF, which uh has a phase-one clinical trial. But this is actually giving the fetus replacement uh enzymes for areas that they may be deficient, and this is mainly for lysosomal storage diseases. And this is an area in our fetal care center that we have a lot of interest in either being a sub-site perhaps with UCSF or starting our own program, again, with the goal to treat um treat children uh right at the very beginning, um when they're still fetuses. So a lot of exciting stuff happening in our world. I'm happy to take any quick questions.
Yes, thank you so much. That was excellent. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so Dr. Marks actually emailed me. He was on for a long time, but he had to go because of other commitment. Um, Dr. Marks runs with several other faculty members, the Neurocutaneous Clinic. They take care of um neurofibrosis, tuberous sclerosis. They have, Dr. Marks is an oncologist. Uh, Dr. Zhang from um, what do you call, from genetics, we have, they have dermatology, Dr. Carnali is there from um neurology. I'm sure they have other people as part of that clinic as well, but that is there, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to hear a little more about that. Um, I'm gonna uh kind of go through here. We're gonna, the next place we're gonna hear from is the uh pediatric adult epilepsy clinic. Have, they've been on for a long time waiting here for us as well. I know Dr. Knight is at least still on here, and Dr. Hrolopian, I think, as well, so they're gonna uh give a presentation on their clinic.
You're going to go, Vanita, first?
Sure, Michelle, if you could pull up my slide, I think it's like sixty-four.
Oh, I did not. I did not download the slides for anybody who was presenting virtually.
Ah, got it.
But I can go to my email real quick if I need to.
Um, I, I, you know what, um, in the interest of time, I will be very brief um and try to make up a little bit of the time. Uh, so seizures are fairly common in children and adults, maybe about five percent of all kids might have a seizure, however.
I got your slides. Uh, we have this conversation. I'm so sorry.
You're fine.
Just ignore me.
This is a big, big event.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so within our team, um, uh, and several of us do see um seizures and epilepsy, including Dr. Cardinelli, who um was just mentioned. Um, I am the um inpatient and outpatient Peds epileptologist on the team. We do offer several specialty multidisciplinary clinics for um more refractory patients, um including patients on the ketogenic diet, as well as patients that um require specialty care uh through epilepsy surgery. Next slide, please. Um, we are very lucky nowadays to have some very targeted treatments that sometimes require some special insurance finagling um by gabatrin for TSC. If we know that a child has a certain genetic mutation such as a Dravet syndrome, we can um use some targeted medications listed here. We know that the keto diet might be best for someone with a, a gluten deficiency and so on and so forth. Um, go ahead and um advance. Um, we um love the newborn screen as it helps us better identify our kiddos with various neurologic conditions and even ones that might predispose them to certain types of seizures or epilepsy. Next slide. Um, I'm gonna actually skip this one and probably the next slide. Uh, you can, you can reach us through, like, Peds can, the PCPs can um refer to us or uh refer to many of our colleagues who always are able to get in with us. Uh, next slide. Um, there are many, many needs within Peds Neuro, including expanding access to multidisciplinary teams, research, and genetics, and just a need for um providers on all levels, nursing, social work, and docs for our team um is what we need. With that, I will uh turn it over quickly to Dr. Hrolopian, who I know uh has to leave at three.
Thank you, Vanita. Thank you for this kind invitation, uh, Michelle. Let me just share my slides here. Okay, so can you see my slides?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'll be very brief as well. So um, I'm, I'm Alin Hrolopian. I'm one of the epileptologists here at the Yale Comprehensive Epilepsy Center. Um, so we also have fairly large population of uh people, individuals with epilepsy uh in uh the adult world. Um, I want I wanted to emphasize today, given the audience, the select type of epilepsies that we have. We do serve as well those pediatric patients who graduate from the pediatric clinic and go come to us. So we do see a lot of pediatric onset epilepsies. They all have their developmental epileptic encephalopathies, which are often hard to treat and difficult because it doesn't, they don't only come with their seizures. However, they do come with cognitive impairment. They have feeding issues, wheelchair bound. They need lots of additional ancillary care as well. We also do the mixed type of epilepsies, which include the generalized types of seizures and also the focus seizure types. And we also have, interestingly, we a group of people which now, given the access to the genetic test thing, we have the category of adult onset refractory seizures where they do not have, let's say, with or without any family history of epilepsy. And we are able to identify the abnormalities on their genetic testing, be it of varying of unknown significance or they have specific connotations. We do see adults with tuberous sclerosis complex, people with neurofibromatosis and epilepsy. We do see adult onset rare mussum epilepsy cases, although they are rare, and tumor-related epilepsies. Where do we get our referrals from? We typically have either transition from the pediatric services or the children's hospital in Connecticut. They refer us to patients. We do have outside community physicians referring us. Other specialty services, for example, movement disorder with certain features of, let's say, Parkinsonism, they have those cases, they refer to us. And also we do serve, and mostly my patient population, they are from the group home or the nursing home. Those are the folks who have the pediatric onset epilepsies and they graduate into our world. So I do see all those patients as well. We collaborate with many services. We do provide surgical and non-surgical routes for people. As for the non-surgical routes, we ensure they have a very comprehensive investigation. And thanks to our colleagues in genetics and thank you to Michelle as well, we do send them to genetics. We have found that it's better that the genetic testing be performed by the geneticist as we might be limited in our knowledge and information. Especially that also sometimes insurances give a pushback in the genetic testing. So you have to, per law, you, it's required to have certain verbiage in the notes. And also the certain types of the test that you have to order. And there are certain things on exam we might miss it, be it like a constellation of manifestations, be it cardiac or whatever, that might put the the epilepsy into a different category. Why is it important to do the genetic testing? Simply because we can adjust treatment. For example, if you identify Dravet syndrome, basically it means you cannot use sodium blocking agents. If you have other, we're moving more towards gene-guided therapy. Plus, we are trying to move towards identifying mutations in the gene that impact particular channels. Especially now that the world is moving more targeted therapies. For example, you have, let's say, channelopathies, potassium channel involvement or sodium channel or other genetic abnormalities that could point to a particular channels. We do collaborate with other services, movement disorder and other specialties if they have, for example, let's say, certain syndromic epilepsies where they have a cardiac malformation. And it's also very important to work with cardiology and nephrology, especially when they have these arrhythmias and you want to make sure you pick the right medication, not to make, not to sort of add another comorbidity on their cardiac. Now, we do also offer advanced neuroimaging from a 3D MRI special protocol for epilepsy patients to look for cortical malformation. We have the MAG recently running for research, but we're going to start doing it for clinical purposes. We collaborate with the Martino Center at Mass General to send, to do a seventy MRI. And last, we have the surgical options, which includes, in the past, we only had resections. Now we have devices. So people who have cognitive impairment, very bad epilepsy, multiple types, and they cannot get resection, we give them device options. And the latest is the deep brain stimulation to thalamic nuclei. We have very new advanced medications, fenfluramine and steripentol. Fenfluramine, we, I'm widely using it. The only caveat with that is that you have to make sure you do the echo consistently because at higher doses way in the past, when it was used for appetite suppressant, it caused valvular problems as well as weight loss. So we follow on that. We have our dietitian here, Lisa Nosbaum. She's marvelous. She adjusts the patients and talks to them about how to adjust their diet. Because it's an adult world, so we just want to make sure the diet is appropriate for them. And those who are on tube feed or a day we can use and formulate a specific diet for them. And last, we have our clinical trials. Now we have several coming up. That includes sodium channels. I mean, we have the potassium channels coming up. We have also some that affects the excitatory pathway and also we have other that work on the sigma and the gaba. So that's an extensive plethora and thank you very much. And if there's any question, please feel free to ask.
All right. We are, we are, we have actually really run over, but I'm gonna try to, Jessica is here. I'd like to let her be able to give her a talk. For people who seem, they're just gonna say. Okay, PowerPoint.
So I'll start. My name is Jessica. I'm in the specialty and motility program. That's a subspecialty, yeah, to GI. Bye. Um, so, yeah, GI, we're a subspecialty. We deal with two types of disorders. Disorders of true motility of, which is food or waste moving through the entire GI tract. Then it's a stomach, a stomach, small bowel, large bowel. And then we deal with what's called disorders of gut-brain interaction. It was called functional GI disorder. It means that the organs are functioning just fine, but there's sensory nerve dysfunction going on, giving patients the feeling that symptoms are happening. We're also a multi-disciplinary clinic via pediatric dietitians, nursing, social work. We also have a GI psychologist, which is really important. Some of the other specialties talked about this. We have these now, these pediatric psychologists that are specialized in one form or another. For us, it's GI. We have Dr. Rodriguez, who's the chief of our department and the head of our motility department. Currently, we're only in New Haven, but we will be spreading throughout the shoreline and towards New York more. Probably within the next year. So I just listed a few different conditions. I split it between those, those functional GI disorders and true motility disorders. Some of them are rare diseases of themselves, like Hirschsprung's disease or interruptible malformations. Other than our diagnoses or kind of maybe symptoms that you would see that are associated with rare diseases. And so we treat both of those. Evaluate, treat, you know, and diagnose these kinds of disorders. Next. We offer tons of specialized services that regular GI providers don't do. We have these special tests that we do to assess how well the body is moving through their waste to the GI tract. Those are called manometries. We assess them in different areas. We have ways to assess for generalized colon transit, which is a SIS marker. We have ways, specialized treatments for rectal or the pylorus, which is the bottom part of the stomach. For gastroprecess, where we help the waterways move through. We have IV stim, which is a novel treatment that's non-ification to treat abdominal pain. And we manage the custom tubes as well. We also, GI, highly specialized. Next. You can have your child evaluated by having the primary call. You can make a referral yourself, like parents can call. Anyone can call the care center. We evaluate every referral that comes in, myself and the nurse coordinator. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Jessica, so much.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know if that, that's a week was on, but I think, is he still on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, all right. Michael.
Yep. You want me to take it away?
You can take it away. So Michael is one, is also part of the JAGS. He is a basic science researcher here in our neuromuscular translational program.
Cool. So thanks for the intro. Just let everyone know, I wear two hats. I'm a basic researcher and I'm also, you can't see this. I'm also, I also have a rare disease myself. I have a rare form of limbic muscular dystrophy. And that's why I'm so passionate about the neuromuscular translational program. So, so one of the things we work on is analyzing large cohorts of undiagnosed disease patients, particularly muscle disease patients. So this is an example of some of the analysis we do. So this is analysis of the largest cohort of undiagnosed neuromuscular disease patients led by the muscular dystrophy association along with VNTA called the DETEQ program. So to date, they've sequenced over twenty-two thousand individuals. And this is a little bit of a breakdown of what we actually see. So this is very important to first get a genetic diagnosis through this free program to neuromuscular disease patients that the Yale MDA clinic does take advantage of. And so we work with the MDA here to actually analyze and also look for opportunities where we can recruit more patients across the United States. And also maybe potentially pick some of these patients for further research, those that don't have a definitive genetic diagnosis. Another way you can get at a definitive genetic diagnosis is to better interpret the mutations that you actually see in the patients. So our lab has developed a functional assay for certain genes of interest that causes muscular dystrophy. So we can get a better interpretation. And so the reason why it's so important to get a definitive interpretation, it allows patients now to enroll in clinical trials that are gene-specific. So these are exon skipping, gene replacement therapies. A lot of these therapies have been presented today. And so without this definitive diagnosis, you're actually not eligible. Because if it does affect a particular gene and your disease has nothing to do with that gene, there's no hope these expensive therapies will actually work on you. And this is why it's so important to actually get get the genetics right first, specifically for the rare disease where the genetic cause is known. So one of the things we also do in the lab in terms of translational stuff is also pioneering the next generation of how we develop therapies, starting off with the patient's mutation. We actually develop a mouse model with the exact same mutation in that mouse model. So, so we're developing individualized therapy, a therapy specifically for that patient. And then here is us characterizing that mouse model. And you can see the absence of a particular protein that we've actually removed from that mouse. And here is us showing, here I'm showing just the effects of gene therapy. So you can see the untreated mouse. Hopefully, it's obvious that this muscle doesn't look right compared to a healthy muscle. And this is us applying a gene therapy at low, medium, high dose. And you can see it looks closer and closer to the normal muscle. I won't go into details, but hopefully you can see by eye what disease muscle looks like and what it looks like when we actually treat it with a gene therapy. So, so I don't believe in curing mice. So we also work hand in hand with our collaborators and regulatory to get, to get some of these things approved for clinical trials, so, which are called INDs with the FDA. So, so yes, I'm a basic researcher, but I do actually want to see these translate to clinical trials also, the things that we develop here at Yale. So because I don't directly interface with patients, I still believe it's very important for my lab and members of my lab to actually interface with the community at large. So both the patient community and also the community in general. So here is us, our lab attending a Connecticut-based patient foundation called Cure Rare Disease, where they, they opened up their Woodbridge Lab and this is Senator Blumenthal in the future. And this is us hosting Patient Day. So we host one or two of these per year to have the patients come through, learn about the disease, learn about the research we do in the lab, and also entertain the kids who sometimes aren't as interested in looking in the microscope. So we have a room to, to entertain the kids, but also teach them some genetics. So, you know, you can entertain them and teach them at the same time. And this is just the end of, you can tell that in this meeting, a lot of the presenters are not young people, including myself. So it's very important that we invest in the next generation of scientists and why not invest in the local community in that? So we run a Yale summer program called, as part of the Pathways Program. And this program's called Taste of Human Genetics, to tell them a little bit about human genetics and also disease genetics. So these are the local high schools where some of these students wouldn't actually have the opportunity to learn a little bit about genetics and the importance of it. So it's just planting that seed that one day we can diversify the workforce and also invest in new young talent. So that's a little bit about what our lab does in terms of the translational research. So thanks for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Michael. That was fantastic, as always. All right. I appreciate everybody who's been able to hang on. I know we've, we've run a little bit over. I think the Wilson, we have our Wilson syndrome clinic here in Naxton. Some, some other people who were not able to make it today, which actually probably was a good thing. So we're looking forward to hearing about that because we do have a nationally recognized, I think it's not internationally recognized, Wilson clinic.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna share my slides. So myself and Dr. Shulsky and Dr. Fawaz run the Wilson Disease Clinic along with many of my other colleagues. I know we're short on time, so we're just gonna try to get through these slides. So what is Wilson's disease? It's a rare genetic disorder that causes accumulation of copper in the liver and brain and other vital organs. It's caused by genetic conditions, autosomal recessive inheritance in a protein, in a gene that creates a protein called ATP seven B. It affects approximately one in thirty thousand people globally. And it's really often underdiagnosed due to its rarity and wide variety of symptoms. And like I said before, it's very much a systemic condition. They often come to see us because we have Dr. Fawaz, Dr. Shulsky, myself, because of their, you know, findings, abnormal liver numbers. Or they can develop cirrhosis, decompensated cirrhosis, or even sometimes coming in with acute liver failure. There's also neurological and psychiatric symptoms, which make it difficult for diagnosis. These patients can't present with full psychiatric breakdowns, but also neurological conditions that mimic Parkinson's, such as tremors, difficulty speaking and depression. Diagnosis and treatment, I mean, the, you know, in the old days, we think that only happens in the younger population. But as we do more of our research, we know that it can span ages of anywhere from zero. We have diagnosed Wilson's disease in utero to this, as far as the age of seventy-five. Blood tests are used to measure a protein called seroplasmin and serum copper. We look at twenty-four-hour urine copper tests and liver biopsies. Genetic testing for confirmation, the eye exam, which looks these copper deposition in the eye itself. Treatment really relies on lifelong copper cleation therapy, predominantly penicillamine or triantine. We can give zinc to prevent copper absorption. In severe cases, we have one every, you know, few years where we need to do transplant to save these patients. But the thing that really is the most important is that it is early detection and treatment are critical to prevent irreversible damage. These patients can essentially live a normal life. They're actually diagnosed early and started on treatment. Patients have often come to us with many concerns, really is the challenge is that there's always a delay in diagnosis. There's a financial burden of the treatment, the financial burden of trying to find an expert to kind of help with management of their disease. There's the emotional and mental toll from the disease and the misdiagnosis. And this is, as I said before, it's a very systemic condition, requires multidisciplinary care in general. So, you know, it's very, it's a need for awareness from the policy consideration. We need to increase funding for public awareness, for campaigns, healthcare provider education to sort, ensure early diagnosis. We really need to have, advocate for financial assistance programs for rare disease to cover treatment and diagnostics. And also access to genetic testing, which is expensive, and specialist care as well. So as mentioned by Dr. Fawaz before in her excellent presentation, we are the Wilson Disease Center of Excellence. We have a multidisciplinary approach to patient care and hepatology, as Dr. Fawaz is our pediatric correlate. And Dr. Shulsky, myself, in the adult world, we have neurologists, psychiatrists, dietary pharmacy. All of this is to provide a comprehensive care to our patient. And these are some of our projects that we're currently doing here. The Wilson Disease Registry is the biggest one. It's sponsored by the Wilson Disease Association, a patient-sponsored care group. And we are doing an international collaboration as well as within the country. And all again, just trying to focus on multidisciplined care and evaluation. We just received NIH funding for a biomarker study between Dr. Shulsky, myself. We are working on the Wilson Disease in the senior population. This is an area that we're trying to explore a little bit more because in the past, it used to be believed of more in the younger population. And we're also looking at non-invasive fibrosis markers as well. To just give a highlight a little bit more about the Wilson Disease Registry, it really is to better find the natural history of Wilson's disease. There hasn't really been a study that looked at the natural history of the disease itself from birth until senior. Also clinical variation disease and changes over time, understand the outcome of disease with treatment, and to understand better methods for neurological scoring system, copper analysis, and liver fibrosis. So I said before, our registry studies sites are not only in the US, but also multiple sites across in Europe as well, and Denmark, Barcelona. I think that there's a few places that we actually haven't marked on here yet. And these are international collaboration projects as well. So I'm going to stop there and thank you for the time. If you have any questions, if anybody has any.
Thank you so much for your presentation and for presenting this. So we'll look forward to kind of working with you guys more.
Thank you.
We have four more, up to four more, depending on who else is still still hung on for us here. Was there ever the DSD clinic? I didn't see anybody on at this point. Okay, so we do have the Adult CF Clinic. I'll tell you what we have, we have Adult CF Bleeding Disorders and Cardiomyopathy provided every, everybody's been able to hold on slum. So I know Dr. Coffey is on for the Adult CF, so.
Hi there. Can you all hear me?
Yes, can.
Great, here. So I just have a couple of slides. So I'm a pulmonologist with the last name Coff, so that's a fun thing for my patients to hear. I direct the Adult CF Program. I think you heard from Dr. Egan and her team. So we are the adult corollary and obviously transition patients, but also have a broader program for from new diagnoses in adult age and for folks moving into kind of the region. You've probably seen a little bit of this, but what's really remarkable is CF is, I think, a great example of the success of Centers of Excellence, Multidisciplinary Team before a recent example of personalized medicine with some really novel therapies. And so you can see here a survival curve that has really dramatically increased over the last cohort of patients because of these successes. And the vast majority of patients coming from the pediatric program to the adult program have really close to normal lung function and nutritional status, which is fantastic. There's a prediction for median survival for someone born in two thousand nineteen to be sixty one years of age if they have access to these novel medications. And the graph below is small, but it's really highlighting that CF is now a chronic disease. There are more adults in the United States with CF than children. And that's consistent around the world. And and so I think there's a need for increased education for us to recognize that patients are going to live into adulthood. And we're going to have a different disease for the vast majority of patients over the next thirty years, which is really exciting. On the right, I'm showing you some increased appreciation for the underlying diversity for CF. What was historically considered, you know, a monogenic disease in Caucasians is actually recognized in a diversity of backgrounds. And there are CF centers popping up all over the world. As we recognize cystic fibrosis has different genetics and different ethnic and racial backgrounds. And so we have a worldwide kind of interest in paying attention to this as our colleagues are increasing the treatment. In terms of our program, we have a longstanding multidisciplinary team. So at each clinic, you can see here, we have a physician, dietitian, a nurse, pharmacist, physical therapist, respiratory therapist, program coordinator, social worker, and a research coordinator for some of the clinical trials and and some of the research investigative initiated trials that are going on. I've, we have a couple of clinics a week, and I've put an asterisk by some of the team members where we don't have enough funding for them to join us on at every clinic. Similar to other programs, we take advantage of some fantastic consultants to some of whom have already spoken about maybe, you know, seeing CF patients. And as a chronic disease, there's a huge need for mental health services that we try and provide for our patients. You can see here that we're a small program compared to some others, one hundred and seventy two adults. But that's a pretty significant number for the state of Connecticut, where I think there are just over three hundred and sixty patients in the registry from the CF Foundation. So we've, we've got a quite a big cohort of those patients. We continue to have ten percent growth per year. That can be from transitioning a few patients from the pediatric program. There are other pediatric programs in the state that we also end up providing care for. We take care of patients post transplant, lung transplant, and one post liver transplant. And you can see that we also, in order to keep these numbers, we have a significant new diagnosis that we see in older adults, which is a really interesting phenomenon. Our oldest patient was diagnosed at the age of seventy eight with cystic fibrosis, which is kind of amazing when you think about it. And that was the real deal, you know, CF in terms of multi-system involvement. We just received a national QI award. So that's a picture of me and the and the team at the conference. So we're really proud of our QI efforts that has led to some significant improvements and outcomes and and has contributed us to be a leading program in some some areas around the country. And this is all part of a registry database that's supervised by the CF Foundation. So we're really privileged to have, to be able to take advantage of those resources so that we can continue to do quality improvement. I was just briefly thinking about some of the challenges and opportunities that you've heard about across several of these programs. You know, persons with CF have problems with access and cost of medications. The personalized therapies that are based on genetics can cost upwards of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year and and up for some of our patients. So it's obviously a huge requirement for insurance coverage and and the burden with copays and some of the other things, as you can imagine. We have a CF multidisciplinary team model that's been in existence for for decades as a model around the country. But it's a challenging financial model that requires institutional support. We do get a small grant from the CF Foundation to take take care of our patients, but it can't cover all of our needs to provide the multidisciplinary team. And then opportunities, it's a fantastic time for many of our patients who have improved outcomes to, you know, have opportunities to return to work, have children, plan for the future, return to different jobs, go to school, et cetera. So it's just been a totally different opportunity for us to impact their, see the the impact on on their lives and to help guide them through. Obviously, it's also associated with differences in disease over time. And so we're learning quite a bit with our patients to do, provide better care. And one of the interesting things that has also been brought up by others is the opportunity for DNA sequencing to improve diagnostic opportunities across different racial and ethnic populations, which is important for accurate and early diagnosis so that we can implement the appropriate therapies.
Are you doing that currently? I'm just curious.
We we are, we we are able to submit that for insurance approval. But there are examples where insurance will not approve it, and sometimes it can be cost prohibitive. So we.
That's what I was wondering, because I work on something totally different as an endocrinologist. I have a lot of trouble, you know.
Yes, so we we have, you know, toggled between the laboratory at Yale and some out, some send off labs where insurance approval will sometimes dictate which lab we can use. In addition, there, you know, they all have different kind of reporting protocols, and so sometimes don't provide us with all the information we need for some of the subtle variants. But and so that's another work in progress. And then there is a a program underway through the CF Foundation. If we can confirm a clinical diagnosis, we can send a blood sample to, you know, with obviously consent, et cetera, to the foundation's laboratory at John, that they they funded at Johns Hopkins. But but it requires a clinical diagnosis, and that's a challenge, because many of the times we're using the genetics to help us with the diagnosis. So so we're, I think we're seeing similar issues that that you're describing where, you know, we're really having to push our way through some of the the insurance issues to try and try and get our patients access. Yeah, it's a really important question, and I think has probably come up for other patient populations, as you're alluding to. And this slide is just showing, you know, the the team and and the opportunity for me to work with a fantastic group to support this patient population. And so I'll take any additional questions, or or you can reach out with any with any questions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coffey. That was really helpful. Okay, I was gonna say, we still have someone here from the Bleeding Disorders. I know you guys are here earlier. That's wonderful. All right, let me share. Here we go.
I promise I'll be really quick. That's what everyone has said, right? Yeah, I've got everyone to sit down and say, I'll be really quick.
Okay, hold on. What am I doing wrong? I gotta go here. Okay.
All right, I'll just start. I'm Jackie Vaticari. I'm a vulnerable social worker at the Yale Center for Bleeding and Clotting Disorders. Next slide. We are a hemophilia treatment center, so we're a center of excellence. There's one hundred and forty one hemophilia treatment centers across the United States. We are lucky to be one of them here at Yale. There's three HTCs within Connecticut. We are the only lifespan HTC in Connecticut. We treat pediatrics in adults, although we are fostered under Yale Medicine Department of Pediatrics. We offer twenty four seven on call services for our patients. And we specialize in hemophilia care and treatment for bleeding and clotting disorders. I don't know if I mentioned, we're federally funded through the CDC, WHO, and NIH. Slide, conditions treated. We treat hemophilia. Hemophilia is extremely rare. There's about thirty three thousand males in the United States with hemophilia. It is a genetic disorder, X-linked genetic disorder. One percent of the population in the United States actually has Von Lullibrand's disease, which we treat. We also see rare factor deficiencies, platelet function disorders, thrombophilia, thrombosis, and vascular anomalies. The services we offer, so we have a comprehensive hemophilia clinic that is offered twice a month. In that clinic, patients meet with social work, dental, physical therapy, doctor, nurse coordinator, genetics, and pain management. So that's all offered. It's a very long day for our patients, but they're used to it. They've been diagnosed since they were young, so they they kind of like coming in for that. We also offer transition care. That's something that we specialize in. We're working on a QI project right now for our transition care. We have eleven research trial and clinical trials going on right now. We have three QI projects going on right now. We just are starting to open a vascular malformation multidisciplinary clinic that should open next month. We offer infusion training for our patients as young as five years old. We treat that, we teach them how to infuse independently, which is a great life skill. Psycho-social support, hi, that's me. I offer support groups, and I work very closely with the hemophilia community, both on a national and local level. We have a three forty B pharmacy, for those of you who don't know what three forty B pharmacy is, that we get discounted medications for our patients, which that helps support our program. And we have a multidisciplinary hematology and gynecology clinic. It's for adolescents. It's fantastic. They meet with the adolescent gynecologist, our pediatric hematologist, Dr. Frisora, myself, the nurse coordinator. We offer that once a month in Trumbull, and we're opening one in Greenwich for once a month. Next slide. So we need a lot of resources. Transportation is a huge barrier for our patients. We need better and reliable transportation options. Since we do treat rare diagnoses and we only have clinics in Greenwich, Trumbull, New Haven, Orange, and Old Sablebrook, we are really missing that center of Connecticut. We also, you know, see patients from Rhode Island, New York, all of those states. So we need better access to transportation. We need more clinic space. Our providers get fifteen to thirty minutes, but I also need to meet with patients. Our nurses also have to meet with patients. We need more space. I think that's a Yale problem, anyway. We also need more clinic locations. Like I said, you know, we're kind of just on the coast, really need more locations in the center of Connecticut. And then also access to blood draw locations. There's not many Yale blood draw locations within, you know, central Connecticut. We prefer, obviously, Yale blood draw stations, but that is because our blood draws are more accurate than, let's say, West in diagnosing rare conditions. We have more specialists looking at that. Genetic testing, I think everyone has mentioned this, is really expensive and sometimes not approved by insurance companies. Access and cost of medications. The medications our patients are on can cost up to about a million dollars a year for factor replacement therapy. We are seeing a ton of issues, insurance issues currently with something called alternate funding. And this is a huge barrier. This is basically insurance, private insurance company is saying, or private employer is saying that their insurance isn't going to cover specialty medications. And they try and get the patients to get the medication through a PAC program, which are then refusing. So we're seeing denial of these specialty medications, which are lifesaving medications for our patients. And then mental health support. Obviously, we're seeing a barrier, and that's everywhere, but not just in there's not enough mental health support. We need more mental health providers who are trained in working with people with rare diagnoses. That's what we really need in this community. You know, the the North community really needs people who understand rare diagnoses. And the last thing I just want to mention is that in two thousand twenty three, we saw eighteen hundred patients. So we are busy. We always need more support, and that's it. Fast, fast, easy thing. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you for holding on.
Oh, I have questions.
I do have one.
Yes.
So what I was going to ask the colleagues from the CF Foundation, because, you know, they've come today with pediatric and the adult space. You just articulated that you're.
We're lifespan.
Lifespan, because one of the things we hear a lot from our patients is the transition from pediatric to adult is a gap. And it's often where lots of patients kind of slide sort of through there. So are you, do you have that mindset from the beginning about how are you going to take your patients and help them navigate the complexity of that, what that looks like from that pediatric to adult care setting? And how do you go about doing, it seems to be maybe unique from what we've seen today.
So we start at age ten. What we say is transition starts at birth.
Okay.
Okay, so we want to make our patients so aware and so prepared when they become adults, whatever age they consider their adult, right? So we started actually at birth, but at each time we start our transition tools. So each age, so we go ten to eleven as a transition tool, twelve to fourteen as another transition tool, so on and so forth, all the way up to age twenty six. We, by our funding through the government, it's actually mandated. So anyone who's seen in a hemophilia treatment center, it's a mandated requirement that they have transition all the way up until age twenty six. So we really walk our patients through. We actually have our transition tour in Epic. So it's great if patients can do it before the visit, or we can do it with them while they're in the visit. So I think we do a really great job. If anyone needs any help with transition, reach out to me. Michelle has my contact information, and I can definitely help your clinics with that. I did the whole transition, that's how. All right, thank you, guys.
All right. Okay, I think we have, we have our last group, and I'm so sorry that we are so far behind. We have, we have cardiomyopathy. So we have, we have Kevin is there and the desk council who's here with a couple of slides present. And then so he does the adult, and then we have Kevin here for doing the pediatric. And I apologize here, let me get out of this, okay. And show, okay, let me just reshare here. Kevin, do you want to chat while, say a couple of the pediatric while I'm getting the next set of slides here up?
Sure. My name's Kevin Hall. I'm the director of the Pediatric Heart Failure, Cardiomyopathy and Transplant Programs. These, these are the only programs of their kind in Connecticut. And over the increasing number of years, we have a number of cases that we're really proud of. And I think some positive change that we affected for young families and children here in Connecticut. I don't have slides. I think I can reasonably summarize the important areas where we collaborate. Cardiomyopathy, they're ultimately primary problems with the functioning of the hearts themselves. So in the cases that are relevant here, they're not caused by something external, but by primary abnormalities in the hearts, which which may take some time to manage. So in the cases that are relevant here, they're not caused by something external, but by primary abnormalities in the hearts, which which may take some time to manifest. The incidence of cardiomyopathies in children is typically quoted as one to two per hundred thousand children per year. Some sources believe it to be a little bit higher, but those are the numbers we typically look at. Dr. Spencer Manzan and I work in close concert in a very many number of ways, see patients who typically present in one of two ways. In almost all cases, families come in with a high degree of stress and discomfort, because the presentation of these diseases are is often abrupt and too frequently life-changing, if not sadly, in some cases catastrophic. And it's only through the concerted efforts of both our services, both genetics and cardiomyopathy, where light can be brought into the causes of these conditions. The genetics underlying these cases are often nuanced and mercurial, and it's really with this light that an understanding of the cause and the past of relevant or the prognosis can help for the futures as possible. So the first group is the inherited cardiomyopathies. So in these cases, these are things where the heart's too big and really contractile or too stiff and thick, or any number of permutations of changes. And there's been some pro brand, proband, where some sudden unheralded and often tragic event has happened. Sometimes it's one of the parents, sometimes with the children's themselves, if if these, the children are born with multiple mutations or particularly malignant ones. We had a case as an example a few years ago where there was a family that had a child that went to an early infant transplant. And then they had another child that had a very bad cardiomyopathy quite quickly as well. And it turned out that through testing, we ultimately found that each parent had a complementary calcium signaling protein mutation, which together resulted in a sentinel problem that that neither parent themselves manifested, but their kids seemed to to keep doing. Children also come to our notice shortly after birth with metabolic disorders and inborn errors of metabolism. These are fundamental issues with primary mechanical and energetic systems of the body that often lead to severe dysfunction. Clearly, with newborns and infants, early diagnosis is critical, because it's only then where appropriate and sometimes extremely specialized treatments can be kind of instituted quickly to stem and hopefully attain some of that dysfunction. We had a case, another case some years ago of a child whose sudden efforts at at weight loss precipitated a very quick and near complete collapse of his cardiac function. And he came literally hours away from ending up on mechanical cardiac support and likely heart transplant after that. But Michelle, at the eleventh hour, was able to help diagnose a non-Barr's III methyl-liticonic aciduria. And with appropriately and with appropriate and ultimately relatively straightforward nutritional changes, able to reverse those problems. So at the eleventh hour, he he kind of came out of it, and we still follow him with close cardiac care. So, you know, these can truly be fundamental and life-changing conditions for children's and families. And then we're very proud of the positive ways that early diagnosis and appropriate clinical management can influence them. That's all I have. I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
Kevin, thank you so much. I think we're we're kind of, we're running well past the eleventh hour now, so but we're gonna, we're gonna talk to your adult colleague here, and then I think we're gonna be able to wrap this up.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Great, John, thank you. Thank you for being so patient. I'm sorry, we, my my five-minute rule. And I like said, three or four emails, five, five days, so it's all good. Lots of good stuff. All right, go ahead.
I'm John Stendo. I'm a cardiologist, adult cardiologist here. I'm a kind of co-director of the of the hypertrophic cardiomy program, but it's a larger program that gets to see other types of cardiomyopathies. So the especially care that we provide, many of our patients have primary cardiologists, and we see, see them in consultation and then end up managing the patient in concert with the other, with their primary cardiologist. We provide especially care for disease management. We have expertise in cardiovascular imaging that comes into the diagnostic and also for treatment. Expertise in arrhythmias, cardiovascular genetics, cardiovascular surgery. We refer some, some of our patients there, and then also especially pharmacy support for some of the newer medicines that we're that we're using in this field. Especially treatments, that some of the newer medicines that we're using are the myosin inhibitor therapies for hypertrophic cardiomyopathy. Those are medicines that actually, it's a little bit counterintuitive. They they inhibit the myosin in the cardiac myosin, and by doing that, it actually treats hypertrophic cardiomyopathy on a molecular level and treats this hypercontractility that leads to diastolic dysfunction and also the output tract obstructions that we have. So so we basically eliminated myectomy surgeries by starting those medicines, and that's just in the last several years. So but those require a lot of monitoring. Every dose change requires an echocardiogram. A follow-up echocardiogram to see to the effect on cardiac function. Every person has to have their dose titrated, basically. Further echocardiograms. The other things are the transthyritin stabilizers and signencers that are being used in amyloid cardiomyopathy. So those have also been very successful. And we're also, we we participate in numerous clinical trials and registries and also also do some translational research as well. So, next slide. So the conditions we treat, hypertrophic cardiomyopathy is is the most common inherited cardiomyopathy. Estimates, some estimates place it as high as like one in five hundred people. You know, so the, a lot of the cases are are have a clear monogen, monogenic source, some of them about fifty percent don't really have a genetic source. And so it's more of a clinical diagnosis. It's a diagnosis exclusion. Hypertrophic cardiomyopathy, obviously, the the heart gets thick, but there are many other causes of that as well. Including hypertension, valve disease, and then some of the other conditions shown appear, like the metabolic disorders can also cause a thickened heart muscle. We also treat dilated cardiomyopathies, arrhythmia, cardiac cardiomyopathies. Left ventricular non-compaction is also another type of cardiomyopathy we we treat. Some of the rarer ones are the metabolic disorders, stressopathies. We also have a treatment for amyloid cardiomyopathy, which is actually fairly common. Most of those are translyretin. Some of those have a genetic basis. There's a, there's a mutant form of the of the of the translyretin gene that can predispose people to to developing amyloid, and then also cardiac sarcoidosis as well. These are some of our our current research, clinical research programs. We have numerous trials going on with Mabacamtin and Afecamtin. Those are the myosin inhibitor drugs. Mabacamtin is available clinically. We have some ongoing studies with that. Afecamtin is a new drug, kind of a, that's coming out. It's in in clinical trials right now. Somewhat similar, similar concept. It's a myosin inhibitor drug, and it appears to be working very well. So we're recruiting for those those trials. We also run this, we also participate in the SHARE Registry, which is the Sarkomeric Human Cardiomyopathy Repository, which is a we study, it's multi, an international multi-center study group that that pulls data and also researches various aspects of hypertrophic cardiomyopathy as well as other types of inherited cardiomyopathies. On the amyloid side, they're doing a lot of exciting research in that area, using these different different technologies to to treat the translyretin and also image it and and see the role of imaging determine what response. So there's a lot of exciting research going on there, too. And so this is a team. Inherited cardiomyopathies are mainly mainly seen by Shonak Sen, Nikhil Sikand, and me. Shonak and Nikhil are heart failure doctors. I'm I'm a specialist in cardiac imaging. And we we see the bulk of the patients. The sarcoid amyloid cardiomyopathies are seen by Ed Miller and Cecilia Gaiegos, and then Sarah Tatabai, that just joined, joined as well. Cardiovascular genetics, Ari Amani, leads our our genetics effort. And he's joined by Sarah Belski and Leslie Klappe, who are genetics counselors. And then electrophysiology, Rachel Lampert, who was here earlier, she had to, she had to take off. But she she sees the bulk of our, does bulk of our assessments for things like implantable cardiac devices, defibrillators, pacemakers, and for the for the cardiomy, for the inherited cardiomyopathies. Then Jim Freeman sees works more closely with the AMO group, but they all to receive. There's a lot of crossover here. I think, so let's, let's basically, in terms of like challenges and stuff, you know, one of the things for sort of contact information here. In in terms of the challenges that we face, I think a lot of them are kind of, you know, not not unique to us. And obviously, funding and getting patients and things like that is something, you know, we can always do do better at. One thing with us is that a lot of our patients have primary cardiologists, and I think there's a somewhat of a reluctance to refer the patients to to us and think that they may lose their patient. Yeah, I think that's an understandable, but I think, or we try to communicate that for most, most cases, we end up co-managing the patient, which seems to work, work pretty well. So the the primary cardiologist typically has a, you know, patients maybe more, may have better access to that patient for for things like plestrol management, things like that, and that we're available for management of the cardiomyopathy specific issues as well. So so that seems to work pretty well. And I think, you know, I think there's probably a lot more patients in our area that we're, we're not seeing, that, you know, we're making, make a lot of efforts to try to recruit patients and stuff, but there's a lot, lot of patients still that see more general cardiologists, so. So we're always trying, trying to recruit patients and you know, standard program. Relatively, I think that the providers we have here are, you know, relatively new, so building, building clinics.
Thank you so much, and thank you for for holding in there. All right, and for all the other people who have managed to hold in here at this point, too. I will say the same thing. So certainly, if I think we we have run forty-five minutes over where we're supposed to be. But thank you, I think you've already presented, and thank you for everybody who, particularly here. I think if Kim personally had, you had less of a choice to say on, so. I think we're probably, you guys are gonna say, go ahead.
Yeah, Michelle, I mean, just one word, just the thank you for actually coordinating all this. I mean, what a tour of course. Not just the, the, some of the best and brightest positions, position scientists in Connecticut, probably in the world. And so it was really a motivational to hear what people are facing the challenges. I think a lot of substrate for us. The council to really now kind of go through, there's, and there's remarkable consistencies.
I think, yes, everybody's saying the same three or four things.
So I think it's very important that we capture this area directly from from, you know, the start standard power, I was, I think is really, or so thanks for putting it together.
Thank you, everybody, for staying and and, you know, I, I, we, as I said, we could probably do a whole nother session. For all the people we have here, we like, we only got to a fraction of the people we had. So at some point, I had to actually start telling people, no. Right, and I think, you know, we want to give our our colleagues in the North a chance, and then we may, you know, maybe do a smattering of both, that who didn't get involved in campuses afterwards.
Next one's in Hartford.
That's perfect. We'll give the northern people a chance.
So but meeting wise, we just have two things to basically cover.
I, I think that it's it's the people here, I don't, none of the.
None of the others.
Yeah, Leslie, I just want to flag, you guys do not have a quorum. So just do anything informally if you need to.
Yeah, that's, it's informal. Okay, the annual report.
Needs to get done.
Needs to get done.
Yeah.
And then the legislative issues. I'm gonna send in, I'll send an email around later tonight, have both of those. And we're gonna need to form an ad hoc committee for the annual report, just assign each of us a little portion of it. So then I'll talk to Craig about his AI and stuff.
Yeah, we'll see if we can.
Quick meetings that are separate from this.
Maybe the executive team should get together.
Let's get together, yeah, maybe like, like this week. Yeah, get those things locked in.
And then the legislative issues from everybody who's here, I need from all of you, what you think is most pressing legislatively. I mean, we've heard some things today. These are things I've already known, but we need to get a list together. I'm gonna send it out to tomorrow, probably, to Senator Hanfar, just to get him started. That's the one thing they want. They're gonna, because they're starting to look at things that they can make some builds for us. One of them is funding for us. And ways to do that, and I've got that already talked with DPH over that. And then other things, when I saw sickle cell, we talked about maybe a couple of years ago. I don't know if you remember my friends.
Welcome to stay, but please don't feel free. We were just talking about the business that we have to do. Thank you guys so much for staying for the whole thing. Neil, do you want to stay on, or do you want us to let you go?
I can, that's, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah, you can have a couple of like, like informal things now.